Hello, I am Vice Mayor Betsy Nash and welcome to the April 29th special and regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff and members of the public participating virtually and in the council chambers. Public comment speaker time may be limited if there are more than ten speakers on an item. Please note that the City call-up item for 3705 Haven has been withdrawn and will not be adjourned. I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present. In chambers are myself, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, City Council members Cecilia Taylor, Jeff Schmidt and Jennifer Wise. Mayor Drew Combs is participating remotely under provisions in the Brown Act. In accordance with Government Code 54953-B2A in the City Council Procedures Manual, when one or more City Council members participates remotely, agenda items requiring action will be voted on using roll call. This evening, the roll call vote will be taken in alphabetical order using legal first name with the mayor voting last. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Niradorti and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, and thank you Vice Mayor and again echoing a welcome to our special and regular April 29th City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the Vice Mayor calls for comment on that item, if you are participating in chambers, we ask that you complete a speaker card and return that to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, after the Vice Mayor calls for comment on that item, you can engage that hand feature and if you're calling in, you can press star nine at that time. That concludes my instructions. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. Next is the closed session. City Clerk Heron, please call for public comment for closed session items C1, C2 and C3.
Thank you Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our closed session items C1, Conference with Real Property Negotiators, C2, Conference with Legal Counsel for Anticipated Litigation, and C3, Conference with Legal Counsel for Anticipated Litigation, if you are in person, please complete a speaker card. If you are virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. Final call for public comment on our closed session items C1, C2 and C3. Seeing no hands or cards, Vice Mayor, you may continue.
The City Council will now adjourn to the closed session and intends to reconvene at approximately 5:30 PM.
Okay, having our city council back at our virtual and in-person dance. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. Hello, I am Vice Mayor Betsy Nash and we are reconvening the special and regular April 29th City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating virtually and in city council chambers. Public speaker comment time may be limited if there are more than 10 speakers on an item. Please note that the city council call-up item for 3705 Haven Avenue has been withdrawn and will not be agendized. Roll call. I would like to introduce city council members and staff present. In chambers are myself, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, city council members Cecilia Taylor, Jeff Schmidt, and Jennifer Wise. Mayor Drew Combs is participating remotely under provisions in the Brown Act. In accordance with Government Code 54953-B2A in the City Council Procedures Manual, when one or more city council member participates remotely, agenda items requiring action will be voted on using roll call. This evening, the roll call vote will be taken in alphabetical order using legal first name with the mayor voting last. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti, City Attorney Niraj Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you Vice Mayor. So again, echoing a welcome back to our April 29th City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, if you are in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, after the Vice Mayor calls for comment on the item you wish to speak on, you can engage that hand feature. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine at that time. That concludes my instructions. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. I would like to introduce City Attorney Doherty for a report out from the closed session.
Thank you Vice Mayor, there is no reportable action.
Thank you. Agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from city council members. Does the city council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar or informational items? And I would like to pull agenda item K3, Middle Avenue. Does the city council desire to modify the order of any agenda item? We have four proclamations this evening. The first is an item recognizing John Johnston. City Clerk Heron, please call for his public comment on item H1.
Thank you Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our proclamation H1, recognizing John Johnston, if you are in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, go ahead and engage that hand feature, calling in, press star nine now. Final call for public comment on our proclamation H1. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. Tonight, we recognize Fire Marshal John Johnston, who is retiring from the Menlo Park Fire Protection District after 25 years of service. In John's time with the district, he has made a profound and meaningful impact on our community, educating residents in fire prevention and mitigation, helping bring down fires to less than 2% annually, and helping to reduce the use of fireworks by 50%. He has been instrumental in building strong partnerships between the fire district and the cities it serves, using a collaborative approach and exceptional ability to find common ground. In addition to John's work with the district, he has served with several organizations, including the Alyssa Ann Ruach Byrne Foundation, Kiwanis International, and Menlo Park Relay for Life, which he co-founded. Thank you, John, for all that you've done to make our communities safer and more resilient, for your collaboration and partnership, and for your 25 years of dedication to service and public safety, and congratulations on your retirement. We would like to invite John Johnston to accept the proclamation. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I guess the biggest thing is it has been an absolute pleasure to serve the community here, just between Atherton and the park, East Palo Alto. But I was able to really live out my dreams here. But the biggest part is, is I've had relationships here for pretty much the 25 years. Many of you I have known for so long and watched multiple departments, you know, and just the city staff. And it's because of those relationships that made everything so successful and being able to impact the community. And, you know, watching children grow up and just being able to see that, even watching staff and their families grow up and being able to know they have the impact here, it made an impact on my family. And I just really want to say thank you for letting me be able to be part of this community and having the impact here. And I know that you're going to be in good hands in the future with our new fire marshal. So thank you.
Thanks so much, and there we go. Thank you. The next proclamation is H2, Recognizing Autism Acceptance Month. City Clerk Heron, please call for public comment on item H2.
Thank you Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item H2, Autism Acceptance Month, if you are in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, engaging that hand feature, calling in, please press star nine now. Final call for public comment on our proclamation H2. Seeing none, Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. Autism Acceptance Month, celebrated annually in April, highlights and honors the experiences and identities of autistic individuals. Autistic people deserve full inclusion and respect, yet they continue to face misunderstanding, discrimination, and barriers in education, employment, healthcare, and community life. True inclusion means more than awareness. It requires action to remove these obstacles so autistic people can thrive as their authentic selves. This year's theme, Celebrate Differences, recognizes that autism is more than a diagnosis. It is an identity, community, and a lived experience that encompasses both challenges and triumphs. This evening, we stand with the autistic community in solidarity and celebration, acknowledging that to show true understanding, inclusion, and support, we must move beyond awareness towards meaningful acceptance. We would like to invite Assistant Superintendent of Student Services at the Menlo Park City School District Stephanie Sheridan and San Francisco Autism Society Representative Yael USL Navial to accept their proclamation.
Good evening, everyone, including the mayor, city council members, and community members. Thank you to the Menlo Park City Council for this meaningful proclamation, Recognizing Autism Awareness Month. I am honored to accept it on behalf of our entire community, including individuals who are on the autism spectrum, families, advocates, educators, and allies who work every day toward a world that embraces neurodiversity. Your support sends a powerful message that our city values inclusion, respect, and understanding of all people, including those on the autism spectrum. Today's proclamation is more than symbolic. It is a statement that our city values inclusion, respects differences, and is committed to creating environments where every person, regardless of how they communicate, process the world, or interact with others, is seen, heard, and supported. Autism acceptance goes beyond awareness. It calls to celebrate autistic voices, to challenge stigmas, and to ensure access to education, employment, housing, and community life. It reminds us that neurodiversity is not something to fix, it is something to understand, honor, and include. This recognition helps raise not only awareness, but also compassion and acceptance. It reminds us that autistic individuals are important members of our community with unique strengths, perspectives, and contributions. On behalf of individuals and children on the autism spectrum, their families, their advocates, the organizations who work tirelessly for inclusion and equity, thank you for standing with us. Let's continue to build a city where everyone feels seen, supported, and celebrated. Thank you.
The next proclamation is H3, Recognizing National Poetry Month. City Clerk Heron, please call for public comment on item H3.
Thank you Vice Mayor. So for any member of the public wishing to provide comment on item H3, proclamation for National Poetry Month, if you are in person, go ahead and bring me a speaker card. If you are online, engage that hand feature, calling in, press star nine now. Final call for public comment on item H3. Seeing no hands or cards, Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Every April, National Poetry Month highlights the legacy and ongoing achievement of American poets, celebrates the pleasures and benefits of reading poetry, and calls attention to the important role poetry plays in literacy and education. Poetry, an essential part of arts and humanities education, literary and creative expression, and community pride and development, takes many forms, from traditional rhymed stanzas to spoken word performances, from folk song lyrics to hip-hop verses, and many other modes, producing some of our nation's leading creative artists and inspiring other artists in fields such as music, theater, film, dance, and the visual arts. This April, the Menlo Park Library and the Menlo Park Library Foundation accepted submissions for the annual Youth Poetry Voices Exhibition, some of which will be presented to the city council at the May 13th City Council meeting. We invite everyone to join us in recognizing the poetic expression of our young youth. We would like to invite President of Library Foundation Jim Rowe to accept the proclamation. The final proclamation is H4, West Bay Model Railroad Association 75th Anniversary. City Clerk Heron, please call for the public comment on item H4.
Thank you Vice Mayor. So for any member of the public wishing to speak on H4, West Bay Model Railroad Association 75th Anniversary, if you are in person, you can bring me a speaker card. If you're online, press, or engage that hand feature and calling in, press star nine now. Final call for public comment on proclamation H4. Seeing no hands or cards, Vice Mayor, you may continue.
The West Bay Model Railroad Association, or WBMRA, was founded in 1947 as the center for model railroading enthusiasts and has been in its current location near Ravenswood Avenue since 1950. From 1947 to 1950, the layout accommodated O, S, and HO scale model railroads. In 2012, a new design plan was introduced with Wi-Fi digital command control and controllers for a layout completely dedicated to HO scale trains, which was completed in 2023. in 2023. On March 15, over 220 community members gathered to celebrate the 75th anniversary of the WBMR. The WBMR holds open houses every first and third Saturday of the month from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Donations are not required, but are encouraged to help the WBMR continue providing the HO train layout experience to the public. This evening, we congratulate the WBMR on 75 years and encourage all to visit this beloved Menlo Park institution. We would like to invite President of the West Bay Model Railroad Association, Don Birch, to accept the proclamation.
I want to thank the council for recognizing that the club has been a viable member of the Menlo Park community for 75 years, and we do try to provide both entertainment and education to the locals with our open houses, and I'm sure hopeful that we can continue this for many more decades. So, thank you again.
Okay, we next have public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Speaker time will be limited to two minutes if there are more than 10 speakers. You are not required to provide your name or city residence, but it is helpful. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. City Clerk Karen, please call for general public comment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, any member of the public wishing to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, go ahead and engage that hand feature now. If you're dialing in, please press star nine. Okay, looks like we are currently at nine speakers, so this will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. All right, Vice Mayor, we are at nine speakers.
So we'll proceed with three minutes each. Thank you.
Thank you. So our first speaker will be Victor Rowan, followed by Glafira Garcia.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Glafira Garcia. Este soy residente de Menlo Park. Estoy aquí para recordarles de la petición que les dije. Este mandé a de los senior. Este no han respondido nada. Solamente me mandaron regañar porque estaba pidiendo firmas en la, en el senior center y me mandaron regañar. Y yo tuve un accidente hoy de vuelta de que una señora que la autoriza, Randel, porque lo llamé hoy y le dije que esa señora también está sacando firmas y también está promocionando, promociona hasta la, hasta la religión, todo promociona. Pero a ella sí, a ella dijo que él me dijo hoy que él no era, que no era lo mismo, que yo nada más porque estuve sacando firmas para hacer la petición. Le dije, yo también estoy haciendo una petición para bien de todos los senior. Ustedes no nos han hecho caso. Estamos, este, no sabemos qué hacer más para que nos hagan caso. No sabemos si tenemos que hacer más firmas o hacer, ¿qué tenemos que hacer? Díganos qué tenemos que hacer y manden una persona que esté autorizada para hacer decisiones porque los manejadores que está ahí, no, él no hace caso de nada. Él cuando hay problemas se esconde, no está, no está ahí para resolver con nosotros problemas y no es mucho lo que les estamos pidiendo. Solamente que arreglen el piso, que arreglen las sillas, les estamos pidiendo. No nos hacen caso, no sé. Y quiero decirles que esa, esa, estas reglas nomás la está aplicando el, este, Randel. Para mí, yo lo llamé hoy y le dije delante de la señora, nomás a mí me las está aplicando y no es justo. Se están enseñando conmigo o que quiero que, quiero que me digan algo porque este, no sé, no sé por qué no nos están haciendo caso. Es todo. Gracias.
Thank you. And for the audience, yeah, so for the audience member, if you wouldn't mind providing a translation, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Pardon the mask. I'm fighting off a cold. I don't want to get people sick. She was out at Bell Haven. She's trying to get them to fix the floors, fix the chairs, fix some other things. She was circulating a petition and she got yelled at by the people. And she wants, she said, she asked them to do something. They won't do anything. And she wants to know why they told her what she's doing isn't proper. What is the right way she should bring this to people's attention to try to get it fixed. That's what she said.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. So our next speaker is Victor Rowan, followed by Alberto T. Garcia.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If you'd like, I can have you take a seat over here and you'll have your own microphone. Can you get closer to the microphone? Thank you. Our next speaker is Alberto T. Garcia, followed by Jeffrey Shore. And for in-person speakers, if you can get a little closer to the microphone so the folks on Zoom are able to hear as well. Thank you.
Excuse me one moment. Can we actually do, let's do the translation after, if you don't mind, or let's, okay, perhaps we can stop every frequently to get a translation rather than having both conversations at the same time. Thank you.
We want to let you know that we're very upset. It makes us very sad that the seniors aren't a priority. In the new building at Bell Haven. One of the petitions that we're circulating is asking for a ramp to be closer to the new door to the new building. There were three people that fell down because there was no ramp and one of them died. The rooms where they have the meetings and activities are up on the second floor. For the seniors who are 89 to 100 years old, it's really hard for them to get upstairs to participate in the activities. And there aren't signs for how to evacuate if there's an emergency. When the alarm goes off, the young long-haired people, they know what to do and they take off running, but we seniors don't know where to go. I think it's a shame what's happening, the way we seniors are being treated in this new Bell Haven building. And I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you again. Really appreciate that. So our next speaker will be Jeffrey Shore, followed by Kim Novello.
Good morning, Mayor Combs, and good evening to Vice Mayor Nash and the other council members. My name is Jeff Shore. I'm a Palo Alto resident. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to suggest that council consider holding a study session regarding Menlo Park's specific aspects of San Francisco Creek Flood Control Project Alternatives before the end of June, when the JPA Board is scheduled to select one project alternative for implementation. A month from now, on May 28, the JPA staff and their consultants are scheduled to present five flood control project alternatives to the JPA Board for the segment of the creek between Highway 101 and Middlefield Road. A month later, the JPA Board is scheduled to vote and select one project alternative. Between May 28 and June 26, the staff and the consultants are planning to host three community events regarding the project alternatives, one in Palo Alto, June 4, Menlo Park, June 5, and East Palo Alto, June 11. Ideally, council's study session would be scheduled after the community meetings and before the June 26 board meeting. This would give City of Menlo Park Public Work Staff, who have been actively involved in the development of the flood control project alternatives, the opportunity to curate JPA Board and community comments and to highlight Menlo Park's specific project design elements and issues raised by those alternatives. I believe that everyone involved in the JPA wants to move forward with this major flood control project, which is long overdue. However, given the recent flare-up in tensions within the JPA, the June 26 board meeting could devolve into a spirited negotiation. And in my experience, high-stakes negotiations are more likely to succeed when all parties are well-advised, well-prepared, and fully empowered. I would urge council to strengthen the hand of your representative to the JPA and advance the June 26 negotiation by exchanging views with public input in a study session based on a thorough briefing of Menlo Park's specific issues facilitated by City of Menlo Park Public Work Staff. Think about it. I know that Palo Alto is considering a potential study session before June 26. Thank you for your consideration.
The next speaker will be Kim Novello, followed by Sarah Sispot.
Good evening. I just wanted to come and speak generally about housing projects in the city. I know later we're talking about Coleman Avenue, but that prompted me to think and just encourage the city council to really think about planning and the whole, I know you do environmental impact reports, but as I think about the crowdedness on Coleman where I recently moved to, I couldn't help but think, how could we have planned better? How could we possibly have put so many people in apartments and not thought about the impact it would have on our roads and our trees and our neighbors? And so that's all I'm at this moment asking for is to really, as we grow and implement more housing in our town, also not only think about the impact it's going to have, but I know from my own family's experience that we are being, if we're getting housing support, they are squishing, like families of three into one-bedroom apartments, which also impacts our streets. And so if we can advocate against that, again, you know, regardless of if your family works from home, is an adult, has children, to squish so many people into one-bedroom units is going to impact our streets as well. So I'm just asking for a general consideration to keep in mind our long-term planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Sispot, followed by Romaine Tenere.
Hello. I'm Sarah Sispot, and I live in Menlo Park. I recently joined the library commission. Thank you very much for that. But I'm not here today to talk about that or on their behalf. I'm just here to talk about the proposal to build housing on downtown parking lots, and I would like to share my perspective as someone with a disability that causes a lot of mobility challenges. My family and I, we love the accessibility of Menlo Park's downtown as it's currently structured. And even though I can't walk far without a lot of pain, because of the parking lots and their handicap accessible spaces, I'd be able to take my young children to the Ultimate Karate Studio, Chiki Monkey, and restaurants there. And so we rely on the handicap parking spaces in the downtown parking lots and are concerned that the proposed housing structures might make it harder for people like us, who, in particular during construction, and we're afraid that there might be at least a few years where we won't be able to take part in the same way in Menlo Park's vibrant community. And I thank you for the opportunity to share my perspective.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Romaine Tenere, followed by Peter Benzam.
Hi, good evening. Romaine Tenere, Seven Clarence Court, East Palo Alto. Dear council members, for the last several years, I have provided Menlo Park City Council and Commission some comments to improve street safety with limited response. Once again, I wanted to alert the council and city staff on a couple of critical points and see the relevant departments take action before any fatalities occur. At the US 101 North Willow exit 4-4, the do-not-turn-on-red signs that were previously on the traffic light poles have gone missing, removed, or fallen down, causing to confuse drivers exiting the freeway by making a right turn towards New Bridge and creating tension and safety issues amongst drivers. In addition, the timing of the traffic lights along Willow Road is now becoming problematic. During peak hours, the traffic is so backed up along Willow Road that it is very difficult to turn right from US 101 North Willow exits towards New Bridge. Some drivers even now go into the left lanes to turn right. Menlo Park and Caltrans- Menlo Park and Caltrans should actively relook into the synchronization and timing of the traffic lights between Middlefield to Bayfront at different time of the day. Also, recently, a new accident took place at O'Brien and Willow intersection, and I am reiterating the need and urgency to implement an all-red interval for vehicle clearance and traffic safety at all the Willow intersection traffic lights. This will help prevent such dangerous accident-prone situation, which previously took place on Cavano University and Willow and O'Brien. On Cavano Drive, the curved junction between Menlo Park and East Palo Alto, from the Old Polytech driveway to the East Palo Alto city sign limit, is also dangerous with limited visibility. Adding a red no parking zone painted on both sides of the streets would help alleviate this safety and visibility issue. Lastly, in regards to pedestrian improvements, I have asked what the plan is for building the sidewalks on O'Brien every single time a plan is submitted to the Menlo Park Planning Commission for any application in review along O'Brien. To date, beside evasive answers as "do not worry, it's part of a plan", I have never seen the comprehensive plan to build a sidewalk on O'Brien, let alone building that fifty foot or so of missing sidewalk to connect the Cavano Drive sidewalk in East Palo Alto to Cavano Way, O'Brien in Menlo Park. Even worse, some office buildings that are now being renovating, like the 1188 O'Brien Drive, and trees are being planted on the side, which will make it even harder now to build this sidewalk connection. Lastly, I would really urge the city council to watch the short videos that are public that illustrate some of the comments. Thank you again very much for your support.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Peter Benzof, followed by Brian Kason.
Good evening. This is Peter Benzof. I'm one of the property owners at 4055 Bohannon Drive in the city. And I'm here to speak tonight to give a quick update of the parking ordinance in our neighborhood. It was approved in March and went into effect a couple of weeks ago. And so since then, notice has been given to all the RV occupants. So there's awareness that's being spread around, which is great. There's very little that's changed on the streets, though. We still have a consistent number of large amount of recreational vehicles and just property on the streets. And we're in communication with staff, but as a body of customers and clients and business owners, we all are pretty concerned about this topic still. And we spend a lot of time in the neighborhood, so we have this kind of on-the-booth-in-the-ground experience that we like to share with staff. And we'd recommend some stricter enforcement of the existing laws, where people are storing just their own materials around their RVs. It would be nice to have that just at least on the RV or in some type of form that's not directly on the streets. So it would be great to have a meeting with staff, the City Manager's Office in particular, and the Police Department, with the larger group of customers, tenants, business owners in this neighborhood in the coming weeks, so we can understand how the enforcement's going to be rolled out in mid-June. Without that communication, we can't really communicate with each other or with our tenants, and it would be really helpful to schedule that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Kason, followed by Adina Levin.
Hello, council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm also a property owner in the Marsh Road neighborhood, as it's sometimes called. And I want to speak a little bit about the parking ordinance and enforcement as well. The parking ordinance was passed in February. It had its second reading in March. I attended and spoke at the February meeting when the ordinance was passed. It was the clear intent of council at the time, you know, as gleaned from the discussion that occurred prior to the passage of the ordinance, that the ordinance would be enforced as soon as possible, but for consideration given to a few occupants that had children if they were enrolled in local schools. When the language was provided during the consent calendar that enacted and kind of ratified the ordinance, there was a language that provided for the ordinance not to be enforced at all until mid-June, which was a really meaningful and disappointing deterioration of kind of what all the property owners who are very concerned about this topic, their concern around the enforcement of the ordinance. So I'm speaking to urge council staff, police, to carry out what was the overwhelming intent of the members of council who voted in the large majority to pass the ordinance, to enforce it as quickly as possible. And I want to kind of share a perspective that I hope, you know, council and staff will also understand and share, which is that by the kind of undue delay of both passage of the ordinance as well as the enforcement of the ordinance, the city is implicitly choosing a policy to accommodate, you know, this population that decided to drive into the city one day over the property owners who are suffering. You know, we are... We just learned that we are very likely losing a lease that would have, you know, leased our space. And the chief concern cited was this RV population and just the inability to make a long-term commitment, concerned about kind of quiet enjoyment of the property. So, you know, if the city is not relocating the RVs to public land and, you know, and choosing to put the burden of these occupants on a select group of property owners, then the city should, you know, not delay and enforce this ordinance as quickly as possible. And that's what I'm speaking to urge the city staff and police to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Our final speaker will be Adina Levin.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council members. Adina Levin, I'm a park president, and I live near the downtown area and wanted to speak about some topics raised by some other speakers. First of all, in terms of the speaker who was concerned about pedestrian and disability access to the downtown during construction, I think that is a very important topic. As somebody who's lived in the area for a while, the city has... My observation is that the city has really upgraded its policies to maintain pedestrian access when there is construction. For example, there's some construction on Santa Cruz, and there are pedestrian workarounds that you can walk through, and it didn't used to be the case. I think that should be true for pedestrians and all the more so for, you know, people with disabilities who rely on parking, handicap parking. And I think we should be, when there is construction, to be very thoughtful about how to accommodate nearby handicap parking spaces. I do not think that this should be a reason to avoid having much-needed affordable housing, like especially for people who really very much benefit from having housing that is extremely near, you know, grocery stores and hardware stores and libraries and other services that you can get to without having to walk far or drive in a car. So I think that is really an important topic to consider in our planning about how to build in the downtown with a working downtown that is happening around it. And lastly, on the topic of the parking ordinance and people who unfortunately, due to the, you know, lack of nearby affordable housing, are living in vehicles, I think I wish that the city had, you know, started earlier and identified more safe parking options as other cities nearby to us have done. And as I said earlier, you know, I'm sad that we, you know, even as we do anti-displacement planning, the city decided on a policy that would displace a set of residents without alternatives. And the decision to give some lead time for people to be able to find other places to live is a reasonable one. And while I'm sorry that a business that is renting feels that they can't, you know, wait for a couple of months for the city to, you know, do what it said it was going to do and enforce the no parking. I think that's unfortunate, but I think that we're looking to at least do take some steps to protect people who've been living in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like we did have an additional hand raise. So our final speaker will be Collette.
Hello?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. Hi, I just wanted to provide an update on the egg hunt. So I did register my kids. I felt like it was just some feedback for the council and the city in general. It was... The form was absolutely way too much. It asked for name, address, date of birth, preferred pronoun, preferred name, and it was just, it was way too much personal information. I think if you do it in the future, it should just be the name. You can put an address, or maybe the area. You can put other things, but I think a lot of people were discouraged overall from the egg hunt, not the event itself. I think that went well. The egg hunt did not have a very good turnout, as far as I could see. So I felt like it was really exclusive to certain people that were comfortable filling out that information and sharing that information. And I think in the future, I would probably do away with that and come up with another solution. Like I said before, maybe like a suggested donation. The other thing is the downtown parking lot development. I just wanted to... I kind of have been hearing a lot of things, and I think we kind of need to hone in on who the target audience is. Is this for homeless people? Is this for lower-income people? Is this for people working in Menlo Park? Is this for college students? Who is this for? Because I think that would really help us to identify the steps that we need to take. Because if it's for homeless people, I don't see how that's going to support the downtown businesses. So I think there's a lot of things that aren't being shared and talked about, and I think we need to really start focusing in on our target audience. Because I know it's not for teachers in Menlo Park. I know it's not for firefighters in Menlo Park. I know it's not for police officers. I know it's not for any of those people because they make too much money. So we need to figure that out before we kind of move forward with these proposals. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And that looks like our final hand for item I. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. And thank you to all the public speakers and especially to the person who was translating for us. Really appreciate that. So our next item is J1. Consider applicants and appointments to fill vacancies on various advisory bodies. Here to introduce the item is Deputy City Clerk Sarah Sandoval.
Hello, Vice Mayor. Thank you for the introduction. I'm just going to pull up my notes. I'll go ahead and proceed with the brief introduction, and then we can turn it back over to city council and public comment. So, good evening. I'm Sarah Sandoval, your deputy city clerk for item J1, Advisory Body Vacancies and Appointments. Staff recommends that the city council consider applicants and make appointments to fill vacancies on all seven city commissions. This series of appointments is part of annual advisory body recruitment, which the city clerk's office conducts every year to fill vacancies that exist due to expiring terms, members terming out, or unexpected vacancies such as resignations. This recruitment was a seven-week period. It included advertisements and announcements running from February 18th through April 9th. We received 37 applications at the end of it, which we were very excited about. We will go ahead and note that we have had three withdrawn, two of which Sally Cole and Laura Lane are mentioned in the staff report, one of which was withdrawn after the staff report was published, and that's Steve Schmidt. I would also like to note that the city clerk's office has received a letter of resignation from an EQC commissioner that came in after the April 9th application deadline. Per city council policy, CC-24-004, which is Attachment A in your staff report, the application process begins when a vacancy occurs due to a term expiration, resignation, removal, or death of a member. In this case, however, staff requests that the city council allow this additional vacancy to be included in this evening's appointments. If the city council prefers, they could also direct staff to begin a new recruitment for this one EQC vacancy, this one that we received later. Please also note that we have four applicants for the FAC Finance and Audit Commission, which currently has five vacancies. The staff report does include a list of applicants who indicated on their applications that they're open to appointment to bodies that they did not initially apply to. City council may consider appointing someone from this list for that fifth FAC vacancy or could direct staff to begin a new recruitment for this vacancy as well. I'll just briefly go over the appointment process as well as set forth in that same policy, CC-24-004. The process is for staff or the city clerk to ask each city council member for their nominations, with the number of nominations being limited to the number of vacancies. The candidates that receive a majority of nominations will be appointed, and if no candidates receive a majority, we will continue to ask for nominations until a majority is achieved. We will take nominations verbally by roll-call vote, using legal first name with the mayor going last, or if it is the preference of the city council, we can collect nominations by any alternate method that the city council directs. Lastly, I'd like to point out, we do have one Planning Commission applicant, Virginia Portillo, who is currently serving on the Housing Commission. Appointing Virginia Portillo to the Planning Commission would result in an additional Housing Commission vacancy, which we could also appoint tonight if that were the case. For this reason, staff does recommend that appointments begin with the Planning Commission. From there, we can progress in alphabetical order, or because we have several applicants who have indicated various preferences as to the advisory bodies that they'd like to serve, city council could also choose to do appointments by number of applicants or by number of vacancies. That does conclude my introduction. I'm going to turn it back over to you, Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you very much. So just to be... Could you please repeat the instructions as far as... Will each of us, each of the council members, if there's two openings, give two names?
Yes.
Okay, so all at one time?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
All right, so let's proceed with the Planning Commission and...
And if we could, Vice Mayor, before that, shall we go to public comment?
Very good. Thank you. Yes, please.
No problem.
Let's go to public comment. Thank you.
All right. If I have anyone in chambers who would like to make public comment on item J1, please fill out a speaker card and return it to me at the clerk's desk. If you are online on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature at the bottom of your screen, or if you are dialing in from a landline or cell phone, you can press star nine now. At this time, Vice Mayor Nash, I have eight cards for this item. We'll go ahead and proceed with three minutes each.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Our first speaker will be Nicole Angel.
Good evening, Mayor Combs and council members. I'm Nicole Angel. I was up here two months ago, so I will be brief because I think you remember me. I just want to express my continued enthusiasm and strong interest in serving on the Environmental Quality Commission. And just to remind you of my 12 years of residence in Menlo Park and 25-plus years of work in the environmental sustainability field, as well as my specific work in local government as a staff person, which gives me that perspective of really understanding the connection with the City Council. And I've also served as a consultant as well to government, so just really understanding the connection of that, of this role and the importance of the work that you do and the advice and support that you receive from the commission. And then I just wanted to give a plug for Susanna, who's the incumbent. I hope that you'll renew her. She only had a year, and she's amazing, as are all of the current members. And I would be very honored to work with all of them as well as with you. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Will Orsler.
Good evening, council members. I'm Will, a District 3 resident, and I'm applying to serve on the Housing Commission. I'm a strong advocate for building more housing across our city. I don't have a background in housing policy. I'm a passionate amateur, but I've been following the Housing Commission and City Council closely, and I care deeply about the decisions we're making at this moment. I know that being on the Housing Commission is only a small part of a larger process, but it's a place where I'd love to serve. If we don't make room for new neighbors, young families, and the next generation of workers, students, and teachers, we risk hollowing out our community. Friends of mine, smart, dedicated people, have left the area because they couldn't make a life here. We're poorer for it. I love downtown Menlo Park. Kepler's Bookstore was what first brought me here, but the welcoming feel of Santa Cruz Avenue, the hardware store, the farmer's market, the feeling of a small-town main street, those were what made it an easy decision to move here when I had the chance to come within walking distance. That's why I'm especially interested in downtown housing, the SRI redevelopment, and whatever is going to take shape at the former USGS site. This is my neighborhood. I walk downtown several times a week through Parking Lot 1, to my bank, to Fleet Feet, and to the hardware store. We face big consequential opportunities, and I'm personally invested in making sure they lead the real improvement in my own backyard. I fully understand how urgent the need for housing, especially affordable housing, is in this moment, and I want to help shape these projects to meet the needs of the community and strengthen that community. If selected, I'll approach this role with diligence and care. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Andreas Judas.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, City Council members, and city staff. My name is Andreas Judas, and I'm here tonight to express my strong interest in a Library Advisory Commission vacancy. As a 25-year resident of Menlo Park, I've seen our libraries evolve, and I really see them as a place where our community has a hub for civic engagement. The library provides not only books and things that people are familiar with the library for, but also a lot of other things that people don't even think about. And it's a really good place for people to have equitable access to city services. My 20-plus years of experience in project and program management have led me to really look at different projects and see all the stakeholders' viewpoints and see what we need to do to really meet each of their needs. And I think that bringing that together on the commission could help a lot. I really appreciate your time tonight, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Desta Rains.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, council members, and staff. This is not the first time you've seen me here, and I want to sort of take you through the journey and why I'm here again. First of all, you know that I'm persistent because I really want to serve on the Environmental Quality Commission of Menlo Park. Second of all, because you've seen my profile before and because I've stood before you before, you know I have the professional expertise. And I could take the time this evening to take you through my LinkedIn profile, all my professional achievements related to sustainability, but what I really think I bring to the table is my passion. Not only do I have the professional expertise, persistence, but I have the passion and interest to serve on the Environmental Quality Commission and to contribute. And beyond the Environmental Quality Commission, I really want to serve our community. Like, me sitting in District 3, representing the Environmental Quality Commission and serving you is only part of it for me. It's also to be an active member of the community here in Menlo Park and serve in an expanded capacity. Thank you for your time and support this evening.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Daniel Huell.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Daniel Huell, and I'm fairly new to Menlo Park. I was last here in February, applying for the Library Commission position, and I'm here again to apply one more time. The council recommended that we return for the open position. Here I am. Libraries have been a part of my life from the very beginning. I have many friends and family members who have worked in libraries, and I myself have worked in libraries for a decade. In addition, I owe my current career as a software engineer to libraries. When I was seven years old, my mom brought home from the library a laptop, which, since this was 1993, was about 20 pounds in the size of a briefcase. And the moment she opened it, I was entranced. And the very next day, I went to the library, got some books on programming, and several decades later, here I am. That's what I want to ensure everybody has access to. I want to make sure that everybody has the ability to follow their passions, the ability to do anything that they like at the library, the ability to go to Storytime, the ability to use the internet. That's what I'm interested in maintaining. I have worked on several nonprofit boards. I have managed projects both as a software engineer and directing a play, and I think I can use those skills in the Library Commission to great effect. I have, since the last time I was here, attended two of the Library Commission meetings, and I found the work to be engaging and interesting, and it's made me even more interested in becoming a part of the commission. So I thank you for your time, and I hope you'll consider me for the position. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Leith Abdullah. And I'll go ahead and take this moment to remind everyone to go ahead and adjust that mic so we can hear you really well.
Good afternoon. My name is Leith Abdullah. I'm applying for the very hot position of the Library Commission. My wife applied 15 years ago, did not get it, and we have continued to go to the library ever since. I work from home. I spend many hours a day there. And I saw the application, and one thing I noticed when working a couple of hours every day in the library is it does a lot more than just books. I thought, I brought my son here. He's reading a book right now. I have about 80 holds right now. I like to participate even more. I did select an interest in any advisory commission, but this was the one that I picked as my priority, just given my background. I've worked in nonprofits for the last five years. I'm a resident of 18 years. I'd like to continue to be a resident, and I like to, I will continue to go to the library no matter what, for every couple of hours. The big takeaway from the library is it does a lot more than books. It's amazing what the staff have to deal with every day, and it feels like just being a bigger part of the community. And so I saw this opportunity, applied as much as I could, and see what happens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Caitlin Dark.
Hi, good evening. My name is Caitlin Dark, and I was born and raised in the Menlo-Atherton area. I've essentially been here my whole life, which is many decades. And my father was a, he was a gold miner in the tech industry, and I think that's what brought him here. And he also was an engineer and loved to build things. I used to drive over Highway 17 with him every morning before I started preschool, and he built a house in a small community called the Selva Beach. I believe that those times I spent with my father and our dog in the back of the truck and the lumber influenced me to get into residential real estate. I got into residential real estate about 25 years ago. I'm applying for the Housing Commission. I didn't say that. I'm so sorry. With my mother. And about 12 years ago, I started a small development company. I spend my days in trenches. I spend my days moving lumber, wood. I spend my days with a lot of Hispanic people who commute to my job sites over two and a half hours. I am very interested in figuring out a solution so that the people that work, not only on my jobs, but in other jobs, have a way to live closer to those communities, to be part of those communities. It is, it's very difficult for me. They leave at 2:45, so they have like a five-hour, five-hour workday. They probably wake up at 5:00 in the morning, and they probably get home at 6:00. So they're away from their families. Aside from that, I am a volunteer in the Community Peninsula Center for the Blind, Visually Impaired. I've been a part of them for many years. I'm intimate, I know, I've known Tom Smith from when he was probably a junior planner because I work with him. I work with architects. I work with Janice, Marta. I mean, I know a lot of people in the city in the housing, planning pieces. So I feel like I'm well-versed and excited to get involved and hope to be working with you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Jayant Thade.
Good evening and good morning. My name is Jayant Thade, and I've been a Bellehaven resident since 2007, the longest I've lived anywhere in my life. I, you know, we did go away for a couple of years, and I'm currently at the end of my term, serving as a member of the Finance and Audit Commission. I am interested also in the hotly contested Environmental Quality Commission. I'm, you know, personally passionate about the environment. I happen to be the, you know, we were fortunate to be the first resident in Bellehaven of one of the first solar and environmental buildings that was constructed in 2007 and apparently was one of the first, you know, nation's first development of environmental group housing in Hamilton Park. I've been following the work of many EQC members and been inspired by them as part of that we've, you know, completely electrified our home and many of the other things that are championed by the members. I, you know, I care about this as a result of I and my daughter be volunteer for, with Solar Works, which installs solar panels for, in the Bay Area and Central Coast, for those who, you know, find it hard to afford that in the market rate, at market rates. I also been, you know, I've been working in the tech industry for a long time, and I practice a lot of environmental issues in my daily work. And like in the Finance, in the Finance and Audit Commission, I'd love to bring some of my expertise from work and passion in, you know, doing work with the city in such an important initiative. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Catherine Dumont. Excuse me. Yes, Catherine Dumont.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, Vice Mayor Nash, and Council. Catherine Dumont, I live in District 3. I'm a renter, and I'm applying for the Housing Commission. I care about housing because I've witnessed the effects of the high cost of housing here in the Bay Area. For most of my working life, rents have risen much faster than wages, and I've seen how the shortage of affordable housing has taken a toll on our community members. My husband and I were displaced twice in the course of two years, including once at the height of the pandemic in 2020. We were fortunate to have the means to relocate and remain close to our jobs and our friends and family, but too many people are not as fortunate as we were. All in all, I'm grateful that we landed here in Menlo Park because this is where I participated for the first time in the housing element planning process, and that's where my real education in our housing history and challenges began. So I'm welcome the opportunity to join the Housing Commission and work on the current priorities, including for community outreach, implementing our anti-displacement strategy, and creating affordable housing throughout the city. I know I'll have the opportunity to learn a lot more about the issues, trends, and best practices. I know housing remains a top priority for the city this year, and there's a good reason for that. We've, know that we've, we have dozens of residents living in their vehicles. We have families sharing apartments. And this isn't where we're not done yet. So I believe everyone deserves access to a safe and affordable home, and I believe working on the Housing Commission will, I hope to, make some progress towards that goal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Scott Hersher. Scott, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, Mayor Combs and City Council members. My name is Scott Hersher. I'm a longtime Menlo Park resident here with my wife and daughter. I'm applying for the Complete Streets Commission, and the reason why is very simple. I live right off Middle Avenue, and I cycle. And watching how the machinery of city government came together to make the improvements to middle that make lives for Menlo Park residents better makes me want to be part of that. I want to bring the experience that I've had in industry for decades and whatever judgment I've accumulated and do the kinds of things that make daily life easier for Menlo Park residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. This will be our final call for public comment on item J1. Okay, seeing no further hands or cards, Vice Mayor, please continue.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion up at the dais, or should we go ahead and start the process? Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash, and thank you for everyone who applied to our commissions and especially the applicants who came in today to advocate for themselves. It was great to hear you speak. Vice Mayor Nash, I just wanted to check in to see if possible Ms. Portillo is on, maybe in public comment or has an opportunity for public comment, since she did apply for Planning Commission. And I honestly would like to see her stay on the Housing Commission since her term hasn't expired, but just wanted to check in to see if she was in our, I'm not going to say public speaker, if she is in the audience. Deputy City Clerk.
I am not seeing Virginia Portillo online. City Councilmember Taylor.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. City Clerk Sandoval, could you lead us through the applications or the...
Appointments.
Appointments, thank you.
I would be happy to. I'll go ahead and ask if we want to start with Planning Commission?
Yes, let's start with Planning Commission.
Okay. Just one moment. Okay, on the screen, you'll see our first voting tally spreadsheet for Planning Commission. This is one vacancy, so we'll ask everyone to appoint one applicant. And also confirming, we'll go ahead and go with by legal first name with the mayor going last. Okay, I'm not seeing any objections to that. So by roll call vote, we'll take appointments, starting with City Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. I have just one other clarifying... I have just one other clarifying question. Currently, there are four vacancies on the Housing Commission, or are there only three?
There are four vacancies on the Housing Commission.
Okay, thank you. I will nominate the incumbent Ross Silverstein.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nash?
Ross Silverstein.
City Councilmember Schmidt?
Ross Silverstein.
City Councilmember Wise?
Ross Silverstein.
And Mayor Combs?
Ross Silverstein.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ross Silverstein has been appointed to serve another term with the Planning Commission. And from here, I'll just ask the City Council if we have a preference, if we want to just go ahead alphabetical, or if we wanted to try something different.
Let's go ahead alphabetical with Finance and Audit Commission last, please.
Okay. So moving on to the Complete Streets Commission. Thank you for, for your patience while I shift to another part of our sheet. As you see, we have two vacancies on the Complete Streets Commission, both regular terms ending April 30, 2029. Because there are two vacancies, I'll ask everyone to name two applicants. City Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you. I will nominate Kevin Rennie and Scott Hersher.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nash?
Scott Hersher and Kevin Rennie.
Thank you. City Councilmember Schmidt?
Kevin Rennie and Laura Malone.
Thank you. City Councilmember Wise?
Scott Hersher and Kevin Rennie.
Thank you. And Mayor Combs?
Kevin Rennie and Laura Malone.
Okay, thank you very much. We have Kevin Rennie and Scott Hersher, both receiving a minimum majority of votes. Those will be our two appointees to the Complete Streets Commission. Thank you very much. Moving right along to EQC. Okay. So for EQC, I'll also point out, if we are going to go ahead and include the vacancy that we received, the resignation after the application deadline, we are appointing for one regular term ending April 30, 2029, and one ending, one unexpired term ending April 30, 2027. We could continue to take two and then assign the terms after, or we could do two votes, one for each term.
Let's do two votes and then we can assign after.
Okay, so we'll name two applicants.
Two applicants.
Got it.
Assign after, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, starting with City Councilmember Taylor.
I have a clarifying question.
Sure.
There are two vacancies or three? But there's only two even with the resignation?
For EQC, it is two total.
Okay, thank you.
The 4/30/2027 unexpired term is our resignation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for checking.
I want to nominate Jayanta Day and also Nicole Angel.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nash?
Susannah Hill and Nicole Angel.
Thank you. City Councilmember Schmidt?
Susannah Hill and Duster Rains.
City Councilmember Wise?
Susannah Hill and Nicole Angel.
And Mayor Combs?
Susannah Hill and Nicole Angel.
Thank you very much. City Council has appointed Nicole Angel and Susannah Hill to the Environmental Quality Commission. As far as terms, City Council can make that decision now, or the City Clerk's office can do a random selection tomorrow.
Why doesn't City Clerk's office do random selection?
We can do a picker wheel, yeah, that's no problem. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead to, we'll skip FAC and go to Library Commission. Thank you again for your patience. Library Commission has one vacancy, regular term ending April 30, 2029. So I am looking for one applicant from each City Councilmember, and we'll go ahead and start with City Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. I want to nominate Daniel Yul.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nash?
Daniel Yul.
City Councilmember Schmidt?
Andreas Judas.
City Councilmember Wise?
Daniel Yul.
And Mayor Combs?
Andreas Judas.
Okay, thank you very much. The City Council has appointed Daniel Yul to the Library Commission with three nominations. And we will go ahead to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Parks and Recreation Commission has two vacancies, both regular terms ending April 30, 2029. So for this one, I'll ask for two names, please, starting with City Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. I want to nominate Young Don Chunyu and also Stephanie Diebold.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nash?
Young Don Chunyu and Shippa Patel.
Thank you. City Councilmember Schmidt?
Young Don Chunyu and Leith Abdullah.
Thank you. City Councilmember Wise?
Young Don Chunyu and Stephanie Diebold.
And Mayor Combs?
Young Don Chunyu and Shippa Patel.
Okay, so we have Young Don Chunyu receiving five votes, and that will mean an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. At this time, we don't have a majority of three votes for anyone else, so what I'll go ahead is, is reset. We'll remove Young Don, who's already been appointed, and then we'll take appointments once more for that other vacancy. Okay, so we've got three applicants for one appointment, if I could have one name this time, starting with City Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. Shippa Patel.
And Vice Mayor Nash?
Shippa Patel.
City Councilmember Schmidt?
Leith Abdullah.
City Councilmember Wise?
Shippa Patel.
And Mayor Combs? Thank you very much. The City Council has appointed Shippa Patel to the Parks and Recreation Commission. That brings us back to the FAC.
We also have the Housing Commission.
Oh, forgive me. Here we go with Housing Commission. My apologies. So City Council, there are four vacancies, so we'll go ahead with four names, starting with City Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. So I want to nominate Catherine Dumont, William Ossler, Kevin Crannan, and Carol Wong.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nash?
Thank you. Carol Wong, William Osler, Kevin Crannan, and Catherine Dumont.
City Councilmember Schmidt?
Kevin Crannan, Catherine Dumont, Kaitlin Dark, and Carol Wong.
Thank you. City Councilmember Wise?
Catherine Dumont, Kevin Crannan, William Ossler, and Carol Wong.
Thank you. And Mayor Combs?
Mayor Kaitlin Dark, Catherine Dumont, Kevin Crannan, and Carol Wong.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll go ahead and display our results. Okay, we've got Catherine Dumont, Kevin Crannan, William Ossler, and Carol Wong, each receiving enough nominations to be appointed to the EQC.
Actually, could you take, I think that's different than what shows on the board?
Oh, okay. I'm so sorry, just one moment. Could you clarify, Vice Mayor Nash, what doesn't look correct to you?
It could be that I heard it wrong, but I thought you said William Ossler, oh, I guess he received three, so that puts him over. Thank you. You've got it.
Okay, no problem. Those are our four appointees, congratulations. And then we'll go ahead and jump to the Finance and Audit Commission.
Before you do that, I'd like to talk with other council members and see whether there's a interest in going out, putting the, going out to look for more applicants. Certainly.
Vice Mayor Nash, and my, my question is, if, through you, if I could actually ask Mr. Jayanta if he is interested in reapplying for the Finance and Audit Committee?
Sure, I will.
So then, right, do we have, with our appointments, do we have enough individuals who've specifically shown an interest in the Finance and Audit Commission?
Vice Mayor Nash, I do believe we'll still have only four, as the City Council did appoint Shippa Patel to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Right. Is there anyone here who was not appointed, who is interested in working on the Finance Thank you, Laura.
Hello, Laura, I'm interested.
Thank you. All right, so we have five applicants and five positions open, is that correct?
Yes, Vice Mayor, now we do.
Would, shall we go ahead with the applications, appointments?
We certainly can. We also, with our five vacancies and five applicants, we could also take this by acclamation, if the City Council would like to do that.
That works.
Okay. Do I have nods? Five for five, okay. Thank you so much, City Council. So we'll go ahead and confirm appointments for Brian Altman, David Emery, Jayanta Day, Laura Malone, and Vanseepal Agapudi to the Finance and Audit Commission. Thank you very much. That does conclude our appointments for this evening. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I want to, unless, Mayor Combs would like to speak about appointments. I will, I will go ahead and, Mayor Combs and I typically will talk about how we have been in this position before, where we have applied for, in prior years, we had applied prior to going on to City Council, we'd applied for commissions and had not made it in the first round, neither of, neither of us did, and strongly encourage you to please apply again, please go to the commission meetings, follow them, and participate, and do apply again, because it is typical that people are not able to be appointed on their first round, and we have an excellent pool of candidates this year, and please apply again. And congratulations to all the new commissioners. Next, we have the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless the City Councilmember, City Staffmember, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. We do have the item K3 has been pulled and will be discussed after. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the consent item?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So for any member of the public who wishes to provide comment on our consent calendar items, K1, City Council Meeting Minutes, K2, travel authorization for City Councilmembers, or K3, Middle Avenue Complete Streets contract award, if you are in person, please complete a speaker card and return that to me at the clerk's desk. If you are virtual, engaging that hand feature, calling in, please press star nine now. Okay. So it looks like we have four speakers at the moment, so this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, K1, K2, and K3. All right. So our first speaker, it looks like we are up to four speakers, and our first speaker will be Laura Mellon, followed by Janet Poses.
Hello, I'm back. Thanks for your time. I'm Laura Malone, one of more than 135 neighbors in Allied Arts who are asking for safety help on our streets. I'm here to support two specific requests, one about the Middle Ave project. Some of what is planned might go beyond what's needed for safety, and we want to make sure that we talk about unintended downsides. Our ideas are to move the flashing beacons to the Jackalale Park crosswalk where most people cross, to skip the extra treatments at Yale Road, and to delay the extra speed bumps until we see if the other core improvements reach the speeds that we're hoping to achieve. Second, I'm hoping that City Council can approve a pilot of in-street safety signs that we've been trying to get implemented for a long time now. Allied Arts developed the idea, but it's a citywide tool that could also benefit the Coleman Project, other streets like Cotton and Elder and Sevier and streets all over the city that experience speeding traffic. In Allied Arts, this isn't a new concern. The Middle Plaza development that came online last year had an environmental impact report in 2017 that identified Allied Arts streets as a significant and unavoidable impact. Stanford paid a transportation impact fee, and now we're seeing that impact unfold. The Middle, the Middle Avenue Pilot study showed that College Ave traffic is up 34% heading westbound off of El Camino. Speeds are 27 miles per hour on what's a designated bike boulevard, and a cyclist was hit on October, in October on Partridge Ave. So while this issue's been raised before, it's getting worse. The city has a clear, affordable, and scalable way to act now, and I hope that we won't let another decade pass before we try something. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Janet Poses, followed by Sally Cole. And I believe both these speakers, as well as Laura, were speaking on item K3.
Hello, all. Thank you for having me today. I want to talk on the same topic that Laura just spoke about. I live on College Avenue, lived there for about 12 years. I'm on Middle every, every day. Allied Arts is a very kind of quiet neighborhood without any through traffic, because it's got the creek on one side, and so it just doesn't really have the infrastructure to deal with the cut-through traffic that it's having. The streets are not very wide, they're like blind turns, there are no sidewalks that go through. So just in the, the minute and a half between getting out of my front door and getting into my car to come here today, I saw four different parties walking dogs down the middle of the street, two families with strollers, one older woman with her daughter, all in the middle of the street, because there are no sidewalks. So that's the kind of environment there is. College also goes, is kind of the, the throughway to get to Nealon Park, so that's where the, the pedestrian traffic- where the pedestrian traffic with young children go, again, in the street because there are no sidewalks, to go make that left on Blake, which is now closed off, to the nice new crossing to get safely to Nealon, but without the safe avenue on College to get there, we're kind of only dealing with half of the problem. As I mentioned, the streets are not that wide there, so it's very common to have to pull over to the side if you're going, driving down the street, because there's not enough room. Like, if there's a parked car, there's really no room for two-way traffic, so people kind of move over for each other. So, again, it just doesn't have the infrastructure to deal with a lot of traffic on these streets. So, yeah, that's really what I wanted to share. I would love to have just the, you know, affordable, inexpensive signage, letting people know, these are neighborhood streets. This isn't meant to your, like, for you to cut through and avoid a, a speed bump or a stop sign, and putting children and animals at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next is Sally Cole, followed by Paul Sullivan.
Hello. I'm Sally Cole from the Complete Streets Commission, and I want to thank city staff and City Council for working so hard on the Middle Avenue Complete Streets project, which was launched in 2022. So with traffic calming measures being installed on Middle this summer, we're almost at the finish line of rolling out all the improvements we promised Menlo Park residents, and I'm glad we're taking a moment to make sure we've got the plan for Middle Avenue completely right. I'd like to ask the City Council to consider two small changes to the revised plan that the staff is proposing for Middle Avenue. Number one, please keep the enhanced crosswalk with flashing beacons at Arbor Road, as it was in the original plan, meaning please do not move the flashing beacons to the crosswalk in front of the church. The Commission and I have heard and met with residents who live on Arbor and Middle, and in the neighborhood generally, and they all say the same thing. Everyone crosses Middle at the Arbor Road crosswalk, and they almost never see anyone crossing in front of the church. That's because the crosswalk at Arbor is the most direct and obvious way for people coming from Allied Arts into the park. The crosswalk literally leads right up to the gateway main entrance of the park. This matches my own experience of regularly observing the constant stream of kids, caregivers, and families who cross at the Arbor Road crosswalk. I know the placement of flashing beacons at the Arbor Road crosswalk presents some challenges regarding available sunlight, but let's empower city staff to do everything they can to make it work. Whether that's hardwiring the beacons or removing a branch of the cedar tree, the effort will pay off because we will be maximizing the safety of all the many people who cross Middle at Arbor to get to Lyle Park. Moving on to number two, the revised plan adds more vertical elements, meaning speed bumps and raised crosswalks, to the original Middle Avenue traffic calming plan, and I think there are now one too many. For example, the current proposal is to install three built elements in a half-block segment of Middle between the church and Yale Road, a raised crosswalk at the church, a flashing beacon at Arbor Road, and another raised crosswalk at Yale Road. Is that necessary, and will it materially improve safety? Given residents' feedback, I don't think the raised crosswalk at the church will get much use, and it's also very close to the Arbor Road crosswalk, which people prefer using. The two remaining vertical elements should be enough to slow down traffic in a short, half-block section of Middle Avenue. Why should we be concerned if there are too many vertical elements on Middle? Because it's an important corridor, and we should be concerned for all users, bicyclists, pedestrians, and drivers who use the street to get to and from work during busy commute hours. Adding too much built structure on Middle Avenue can come at a cost. It can back up traffic and increase congestion on the street. We also know that too much built structure on a street can have the effect of diverting traffic to side streets, which we want to avoid. In closing, please consider removing the raised crosswalk at the church from the plan. We will be staying true to our goal to make Middle Avenue much safer, but not in a way that overly complicates the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Our next speaker will be Paul Sullivan, followed by Bill Kirsch.
Hi. Thank you very much to the council members and the Complete Streets Commission. I am a Menlo Park resident and live at the corner of Middle Avenue and Arbor Road. Like several of the last speakers, I'm here to advocate for, one, to relocate the proposed crosswalk at Middle and Arbor to the crossing at Jack Lyle Park instead of New Community Church, two, to add an all-way stop at College and Arbor, and three, to add gateway signs and other basic calming, traffic calming solutions in Allied Arts due to the added cut-through traffic as a result of the Middle Avenue project. One, first, we need to relocate the proposed crosswalk at Middle and Arbor. Today, it's a game of chicken to cross Middle at Arbor when we cross with our small children towards Lyle Park. It's probably the most dangerous crosswalk in Menlo Park. It's only a matter of time before a child or pedestrian is hit. Light a beacon at Arbor and Middle, even without a raised crosswalk, would be a big improvement. Second, we need an all-way stop at Arbor and College, and not just a one-way stop. This is a dangerous unmarked intersection. Traffic flows from Middle onto Arbor, then veers quickly left onto College. If drivers aren't required to stop before turning left onto College, the crossing will not be safe for pedestrians. Arbor and Cambridge already has an all-way stop. At a less busy intersection down the street, College clearly needs one as well. Three, finally, we need gateway signs and other basic traffic calming in Allied Arts. It's common knowledge that Allied Arts is a dangerous, high-speed cut-through zone with its location near El Camino and no buffer from Caltrain or any commercial district. These are neighborhood streets with kids playing in the front yards. The changes on Middle Avenue will obviously add to the traffic problems as cars try to avoid Middle. Low-cost gateway signs displaying slow streets at the intersection of key entry streets like Arbor and Middle will slow down traffic immediately and remind drivers they are in a residential neighborhood. The signs are only around $250 each and can be installed in minutes. I'm surprised to see any pushback on traffic calming measures in Allied Arts. We're asking for simple, low-cost solutions. There's a grassroots movement in support of this, led by Laura Milan, with now 138 Allied Arts residents having signed the petition in support of it online. Laura has already done great, hard work here. We really just need to, your support putting her vision into action. And the Middle Avenue project has been planned for three years. At the kickoff meeting in May 2022, many residents spoke in favor of the Middle Avenue and Arbor crosswalk. We're also assured that cut-through traffic would be addressed as part of this project, but it appears it hasn't, which is very disappointing. Again, we're asking for simple, commonsense solutions here, and we need to get this right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Bill Kirsch, followed by Chase Renzon.
Hi, this is Bill Kirsch. Mayor Combs, Vice Mayor Nash, and City Council, thank you for your hard work and dedication to our city. I really appreciate it. I want to add comments to Laura Milan's speech and the previous speaker, Paul. I'm in favor, strong favor, of all the remediation that's being done on Middle with the adjustments that the prior folks have talked about, but I think this is a great move for Menlo Park. Unfortunately, the city has not attended to Allied Arts. We've had a cut-through traffic problem for a long time, and it's mostly on our street, Partridge. What we see is traffic heading to El Camino Rial in the afternoon and wanting to go south. Folks, as they're on Middle and hit the intersection with University, instead of continuing on Middle, continuing on Middle where you meet all the Safeway traffic and the stoplight, they'll turn right, and then they generally will turn left on Partridge Avenue. And we have traffic going down our Street 30 to 40 miles an hour all day long. Thirty, even 30 miles an hour is too fast, and Laura has done a lot of work with the signage that is very simple. I can't understand any reason why the city can't place the simple slow-street signs, just identifying to drivers that they're in a neighborhood and they're not on a collector's street. So please pay attention to us. Simple things can be done to help our neighborhoods out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, and our final speaker will be Chase Renzon.
Hello, folks. I wish that I could have brought my 10-year-old son, Alex, with me. He really wanted to show up for this meeting. You actually might remember him because he spoke for the Middle Ave Bike Lane Project, but I have his gorgeous, handwritten, fourth-grade statement here, which I wanted to read. It says, oh, and before I get into the note, I do want to thank the entire council. I've just had such positive experience working with Mayor Combs and Betsy Nash. I mean, I have your number in my cell phone, and I just really, regardless of what y'all decide to do, I want to thank you for our service, your service, our community. So thank you. My son's note, he says, "Thank you for letting me speak. You might remember me and my friends when we spoke about the need for the Middle Ave bike lanes, and thank you for voting to keep the bike lanes." I want to speak to you today about the crazy driver, the crazy driver, sorry, I didn't proofread this, the crazy drivers in Allied Arts. As you might remember, me and my friends are part of the Oaknall Bike Bus. There are dozens of kids that bike to school every day. When cars from El Camino cut through Allied Arts, they drive so fast, it is so scary. We need to do something, "something" is in all caps. At a minimum, we need signs and maybe more police. Please help keep me and my friends safe. I love that 138 of my adult neighbors signed the petition, but there wasn't an opportunity for the kids to sign. I know at least personally two dozen kids that live in the neighborhood. They meet at my house for the Oaknall Bike Bus. Sorry if I get emotional. I just care so much about safety. So even though the kids couldn't sign, I wanted to read the names of all those kids that meet in or near my house. It is Alex, Peter, Logan, Graham, Izzy, Maria, Finley, Ryan, TJ, Callum, Jasper, Florence, Patrick, Agusta, Andrew, W., Andrew, S., Hunter, Leila, and Sam. There's way more children in the neighborhood than that. Those are just the ones that meet at my house and bike to school every day. I know there are so many constraints, and it's really hard to make everything work when you have these complex projects. There's the budgets, there's different priorities, there's the timeline, but myself and all of the kids of this neighborhood, and again, I would have brought them, but they're in soccer practice, swim practice, the dinner table, are asking you to please do something. I think the signage pilot is a really wise and hopefully small thing that we can do to start notifying people that when they're cutting through the neighborhood, because they do, and inevitably they will even more, I know this because I live on a street that's, you know, right off El Camino, I think the signs is such a reasonable thing to do. And again, from the bottom of my heart, I would implore the council to please consider it, and anything else they might be able to do to keep Allied Arts and the dozens and dozens and dozens of children that live there and bike safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Chase. That was our final speaker. Seeing no further hands or cards. Vice Mayor, may continue.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the public comments. I'm looking to the city clerk to find out, how would you like to do this, as far as, should we go ahead with the consent items, K1 and K2 first, and then go to K3, or what is the best way to do this?
Yeah, we can do a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item K3, and then we can move on to item K3.
Thank you. Is there any discussion about K1 and K2, or would someone like to make the motion? Please.
I'll make a motion to approve items K1 and K2 on the consent calendar.
I'm happy to second.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor by City Council Member Taylor, and a second by City Council Member Wise, to approve the consent calendar, except item K3. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Council Member Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
City Council Member Schmidt?
Yes.
City Council Member Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we will move on to K3, and first of all, I would like to call up the slide, please, for Ms. Heron, but I'd like to thank, first of all, all the people who have been involved in the Complete Streets, Middle Avenue Complete Streets, all the people who came out to the meetings. There, we had another meeting with Council Member Wise and Complete Streets Commission Chair Cole last Sunday, and we had a good turnout from the residents talking about Middle Avenue. And so thank you so much for that feedback and for letting us have more discussion about this. Yesterday, I had walked through the site. We walked from San Mateo Drive through Nealon Park with Public Works Director Azalea Mitch, and thank you for that. It was a really informative, helpful meeting. Out of that meeting, we came up with three directions, which are to change some of the project, some of the Middle Avenue project. And I guess just backing up a minute, the project was approved in 2022 by council, and then recently, it has, just before it went out for bid, it went through an engineering review, and at that point, there were some changes to it. And that is why we're having this discussion again today, is to really go through some of the changes that were made as, per the engineering review, and to just make sure that we've got it in sync with the community as much as possible. So as far as those changes, the Arbor intersection was heard loud and clear, and actually, Ms. Mitch, would you prefer to walk through these changes?
Sure, absolutely. Council member, good evening, council members. Azalea Mitch, Public Works Director, so thank you for the time yesterday. It was, I think, a very constructive sidewalk. There were some changes that were made during the design process because of drainage issues, power issues. The beacon on Arbor was moved. We have since assessed there is potentially electrical power that we can use from the PG&E pole. There's a street light, and we will look at dropping some electrical, the electrical line to hardwire that beacon so we can move it back to the original location. We moved it to the other location because we actually had issues with the raised crosswalk. Due to grades and ADA compliance, we couldn't make the slopes work, so we moved that raised crosswalk to the other side of Arbor with the beacon itself. So the proposed change now is moving the beacon back to the original location, but we can't, we will keep the raised crosswalk at the other section of Arbor, because that is the vertical enhancement to reduce speeds, although we can't make that work on the, the original site. So, but we will make that change and hardwire it rather than having it be solar-powered.
Thank you. And can you, for the audience and all of us up here, could you explain a little bit more about what you did explain to me, that we need certain distances between the vertical structures to, well, and to enhance safety?
Absolutely. So best practices, and these are industry standards, the Institution of Transportation Engineers, NACO, they recommend that vertical enhancements are spaced between either 250 and up to 600 feet apart to be able for those speeds to comply to the 25-mile-per-hour limit. So we, we see that throughout town. We actually, on Laurel Street, those raised crosswalks and speed humps are spaced around 300 feet, or we are proposing on Middle is actually something that does exceed that standard because we did take a look at the corridor and believe that what's being recommended will achieve those lower speed limits. So we are, we were very thoughtful. Our design team is actually on the call. They can talk about best practices, industry standards, but the goal here is to make sure that we have enhancements to make sure that vehicles travel at 25 miles per hour. to make sure that vehicles travel at 25 miles per hour.
Thank you. Any discussion right now up on the dais? Councilmember Schmidt.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash, and thank you for raising this one for discussion. I also was able to spend some time with Laura and some folks in the neighborhood. And I would really ask if we can thoughtfully consider the in-sign or the in-street safety signs. I know that was a little ad hoc, and I know that was a little citizen-driven, but I had some time to also talk with city staff a little bit about it. And the side streets are on a list, and they're, you know, working their way through, and I can definitely appreciate that. And the constraints on staff time for trying to mitigate the traffic on every street. I mean, there's a schedule, we need to stick to it, I can totally appreciate that. But I would ask us to really thoughtfully consider some low-cost creative solutions that are maybe not traditional to what the city does. But I want to say, I lived overseas for 12 years and saw this approach in different communities as well, and it was fairly effective in reducing some of the speed. So while we're, while we're working our way through the street list, I would, I would ask us to potentially consider some of the things that Laura and team are putting forward. Thanks.
Thank you. And my understanding, I was actually going to address that at the end of it. No, it's no problem at all. But let's, my understanding is, right now, we are talking strictly about the design bid that is going out, that needs to be confirmed. We, there has been a lot of really good advocacy for signage in Allied Arts. It is also needed many other places throughout the city. And staff has been thinking about this and just how to, and the Complete Streets Commission as well. And I think it will be a topic in the future. But right now, we're really trying to stay focused on the design. It's something where there are some really good ideas that are not, will not break the budget. We do need to figure out how to, how that gets implemented, and that will be a future discussion. Do you, Ms. Mitch, would you like to say anything more about this?
Sure, thank you. So we do have an initiative to come back to council with our Slow Streets program. You know, our role is to take a look at the city, citywide comprehensive actions. We have a very long list of requests for traffic calming. And part of that process will involve evaluating the most effective treatments, the process for evaluating requests, and the priorities. We have, there's only so much that can be done every year. And part of that support is coming back to you with a process that really helps us prioritize the requests. So that, we have been rather understaffed. We're working on filling key positions, and our hope is to come back to you with that plan for discussion in the near future.
Thank you. And one of the things that will be under consideration is just whether we can do some of these less expensive implementations. There's also been a lot of talk about, some of our neighboring cities are using rubber speed bumps and lots of other traffic calming that we have not yet started, although I believe that one of our future items, Coleman Avenue, is proposing to use the rubber speed bumps, which we'll discuss later tonight. But I, there is a tremendous amount of interest in getting traffic calmed in Allied Arts throughout the city. And it's very much a focus, and hopefully, as we get more staff, we will be able to really move forward on some of these. So, thank you. Mayor Combs, please.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. I just have a question and then a comment. And I think I will not make the end of this agenda item with you, but we'll share, we'll share my thoughts. My first question is to staff, and I appreciate Vice Mayor Nash you narrowing what this agenda item is about, specifically the measures, the bid related to the measures on Middle. But obviously, the residents and Allied Arts see this as connected. And so it'd be great if, if staff could provide, for me at least, some understanding whether they do see these things as connected or not, like the elements that are part of Middle, the Middle Avenue project. Do they see this as a connected network, or do they not? Because I think that that's the foundation of what the residents and Allied Arts are, or the foundation that the residents and Allied Arts are using to make this, this specific request.
Sure. Mayor Combs, thank you for your questions. With respect to connectivity, we, the questions we've been receiving from the residents really focus on cut-through traffic and the consequences of having enhancements that reduce speeds on, on, you know, specifically on Middle, and if those vehicles will be, will then take different routes. We have our design team on board. If Jeff is on board for, from Parametrics. Oh, Zach, there we go, great. Zach Trinosco is on, will be online. And neighborhoods are definitely connected. The questions here is the, sort of the degree of a driver, you know, in their choices in terms of getting to their destination. What we do see in Allied Arts is a lot of local traffic. And while speeds will be reduced and those vertical enhancements will be in place, we don't think it's highly likely that we'll start, that the improvements will divert traffic onto the local roads. But Zach can speak more clearly to that.
Yeah, you know, I think that's a great question. I think it's a concern that I can understand the community has. And in looking at these, are there things that could be done, low-cost options, that would be effective? Possibly, possibly not. However, in our understanding of this corridor, you know, our primary goal was safety along this corridor and trying to achieve 85th percentile, you know, 25 to 30 mile-an-hour speeds on Middle Avenue. And the perceived cut-through route, there's always going to be people that will cut through, and that's typically related to traffic, not necessarily traffic calming. And that may be due to backups at El Camino or other opt, or other types of traffic-related issues. But these shouldn't be affected by the traffic calming measures on Middle Avenue itself. You know, there are limited parallel routes for Middle Avenue, and there's really no clear perceived easy route. I know people, there was some comments on people kind of looping around using El Camino and then some of the side streets to avoid the Safeway entrance and other things. However, we think the traffic calming elements on Middle are not going to increase that whatsoever. They should really be to achieve the primary goal of safety and not deterrence.
Thank you for that answer. So I'll say a couple of things I want to share. Overall, like historically, I have been supportive of some elements of our efforts, our traffic calming efforts on Middle Avenue. You know, raised crossings, additional visibility for crossings, additional crossings. I have not been supportive of some other elements of the efforts on, on Middle Avenue, including the complete removing of on-street parking and in front of specifically some of the residences on, on Middle, and also reconstructing the on-street parking in front of Neilon Park, which I don't think has, I think has actually lessened safety to a degree, given the unique and somewhat abnormal design that is in place there. And as this project comes for sort of final approval, I think my position remains, remains the same. There's some elements of these changes which I'm supportive of, some elements of which I am, I am not. I would ask, though, somewhat along the lines of Councilmember Schmidt, I appreciate that, like, you know, every, there's a queue, and everything needs to get in the queue, and that there may not be the connectivity as it relates to Middle Avenue and some of the other streets in Allied Arts, like Hollis, that residents think they see or they perceive that, that connectivity or that direct connection of getting sort of cut-through traffic or likely to get more cut-through traffic doesn't seem to be what city staff is seeing. I, you know, definitely appreciate that. I do think we should also look at it from the position of it could be hard for residents and neighbors in Allied Arts to see so much, you know, time and effort and change being put into, to Middle Avenue. Like, we're discussing, maybe we're, there's an overabundance or an abundance of, of where we're going to put things, where we're going to raise crosswalks. Maybe we're raising them too many in too many places. To see so much effort in a street so close and to then, you know, not see the city pay any attention to your efforts, which are relatively minor in comparison. And so while I appreciate that they are, they are different, there are certainly a connection of some source that exists. There's certainly a proximity that exists, and I think we should be, we should be mindful of that. And so, but with that, I'm going to leave my thoughts there and leave it to my colleagues to come to a final determination. As far as direction, it is a little after 4:00 AM where I am, and I'm not sure I could be effective as part of the discussion going, going forward. But I did want to, want to share, share my overall thoughts on this agenda item.
Thank you very much, Mayor Combs. And I've been really impressed that you stuck with it this long. Thank you, appreciate your comments. Other comments at this point? So I guess I have one other question, and that's, there has been, well, I guess, as, I believe you said that as you're going through this, you will be still looking at every, at all the placements and making sure that this is, you are getting the efficiency that you are hoping for and the effects that you're hoping for. So please, if there's anything more that you need from council or residents, please do not hesitate to come back to us. I personally wish that there was more that we were doing, that we were. I would like to actually see fewer speed humps and raised crosswalks in this. I will take the staff's professional recommendations and be very happy that we've, we'll be relocating these, well, with these three items. And thank you very much for your consideration of all of this. And I guess just as a final comment, I think that all of us very much want every neighborhood to be safe. This definitely, as we are proceeding with this, if there is, please do track what is happening in the nearby neighborhoods and just making sure that we can make this as strong a project, safe for everyone on Middle Avenue and on adjacent streets and throughout the city. So, thank you. Is there any need to go through these directions? Or can we, everyone feels feel comfortable taking a vote? Thank you. City Clerk Heron, could you please state the motion and call for the vote? Or do you need any clarification?
So we can take the direction, just a city council direction, based on what we have on screen and what staff has discussed with the city council. And then we can revert back to the original motion as set forth in the staff report. And because we have all city council members at the dais, we can do this via vote cast.
Very good, thank you. And I guess I have one more question for Ms. Mitch, and that's, we had, there was a little bit more language that you included. Should that be include, all of that language be included in the motion? Or is this sufficient?
This is sufficient.
Very good, thank you so much.
Okay, so with that, I would like to hear a motion and a second for the award of construction contract.
I will move to award the contract.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Nash, and a second by City Councilmember Taylor to award a $1,507,400 construction contract to Rapid Services LLC, doing business as Rapid, creating services for the Middle Avenue Complete Streets Project. Approve the contingency in amount of $230,000 to be held by the city. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. So next is regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The first regular business item is L1. Consider and adopt a resolution authorizing the removal of parking on Coleman Avenue and installation of a stop sign at Coleman Avenue and Santa Monica Avenue. Here to introduce the item is Associate Transportation Planner Cassandra Cortez.
Good evening, Mayor and council staff. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Cassandra Cortez, and I'm an Associate Transportation Planner here at the city of Menlo Park. Tonight, I'll be speaking about the Coleman Avenue Pilot Project for council to consider and adopt a resolution authorizing the removal of parking on Coleman Avenue and installation of a stop sign at Coleman Avenue and Santa Monica Avenue. So tonight's agenda for this item includes an overview of the pilot project area, a little bit of background of the Coleman Avenue Pilot Project, a project overview of the pilot per city council direction, visual renderings of the pilot, and lastly, city council action. So Coleman Avenue is jurisdictionally split between the city of Menlo Park and San Mateo County. And the map above shows that boundary of the city and county at the black dashed line, approximately at Reardon Place on Coleman Avenue. And the Coleman Avenue Pilot Project will encompass Coleman Avenue from Willow Road to that city-county boundary line. And for some background about how the Coleman Avenue Pilot Project became a project, in the spring of 2022, the Coleman and Rainwood Avenues Transportation Study kicked off. And this was a joint planning effort between the city of Menlo Park and San Mateo County to identify a planning effort to improve safety, accessibility, and mobility for Coleman Avenue and Rainwood Avenue. At the October 22 city council meeting, city council provided direction to staff to proceed with improvements in the city portion through a pilot. Additionally, city council authorized sending a letter that was signed by the mayor in support of the one-way pilot. At the November 19 city council meeting, city council accepted the Coleman and Rainwood Avenues Transportation Study. And most recently, at the March 12 Complete Streets Commission meeting, the commission unanimously provided recommendation for the city council to approve the pilot. And at the October 22 city council meeting, staff received the following direction. A bike lane westbound towards Rainwood Avenue. A shared lane with people who are biking and people who are driving eastbound towards Willow Road. no parking on the north side of Coleman Avenue to allow sufficient roadway space for the pilot bike lane, a stop sign on Coleman Avenue and Santa Monica Avenue, and also traffic calming measures, which will be through rubberized speed cushions to reduce the speeds of people who are driving. And Coleman Avenue has a considerable amount of parking demand due to the multifamily housing complexes on the corridors. The apartments on Coleman Avenue and Coleman Place are designated as R3 or an apartment district and could qualify for an annual overnight parking permit for on-street parking. And under city code, annual overnight parking may be granted to residents who live in R3 apartment districts if the building was not required to build two spaces of off-street parking at the time the building was constructed. And each complex is permitted as many on-street parking to supplement the off-street parking. So in total, there's two spaces available per unit. And currently, between Coleman Avenue and Coleman Place, there are 139 permits that could be issued within the area. And currently, there are about 25 annual overnight parking permits that are issued within the corridors. All permits expire at the end of August every year, and last year, there was 53 permits issued within the area. So there's still maybe some households needing to renew. And the pilot project is proposing to remove roughly 40 parking spaces along Coleman Avenue from the north side. Residents that live in the Coleman Avenue Apartments could still be eligible for an annual overnight parking permit. And parking would remain on the south side of Coleman Avenue, Santa Monica Avenue, and Coleman Place. The project team has prepared visual renderings of the pilot to demonstrate their improvements. And this rendering is showing Coleman Avenue near Willow Road. And some important features to call out in this rendering includes the park, the removal of parking from the north side of Coleman, a bike lane westbound towards Ringwood Avenue, and a shared lane with people who are biking and people who are driving eastbound towards Willow Road with greenback sheriffs. And this visual rendering is showing Coleman Avenue between Coleman Place and Santa Monica Avenue. And the project team will also be implementing traffic calming measures through rubberized speed cushions at the same time as the pilot. And this rendering is showing Coleman Avenue and Santa Monica Avenue. And in addition to the previous renderings, the project team will also be implementing a stop sign on Coleman Avenue at Santa Monica Avenue to provide clear right-of-way designation for people who are crossing the street to access a nearby bus stop or the nearby school bus stop. And this above slide is showing the tentative pilot schedule. So tonight, city staff are recommending that city council consider and adopt a resolution to authorize parking removal from the north side of Coleman Avenue and installation of a stop sign on Coleman Avenue and Santa Monica Avenue. Next step is the project team will conduct a data collection of existing conditions during May of 2025. And the pilot is tentatively scheduled to be installed in the summer of 2025 while school is out of session. And lastly, the project team will repeat the data collection in May of 2026 to compare the two data sets to evaluate the pilot. Which brings us to city council action tonight. To proceed with the Coleman Pilot, staff is recommending that city council consider and adopt a resolution to authorize the removal of parking on Coleman Avenue and the installation of a stop sign on Coleman Avenue and Santa Monica Avenue. After this, staff will proceed with pilot installation in the summer of 2025. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much. City Clerk Karen, could you, do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item L1, consider and adopt a resolution authorizing the removal of parking on Coleman Avenue and installation of a stop sign at Coleman Avenue and Santa Monica Avenue. If you are in person, please bring me a speaker card here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, engaging that hand feature, calling in, please press star nine now. Okay, we are currently at 18 speakers, 19, maybe 20. So this will be the final call for any public comment on a regular business item L1. Okay, so at final count, we are at 20 speakers.
Thank you. We will do two minutes per speaker.
Okay. So our first speaker will be Nicole Angel, followed by Kevin Rennie.
Hi, I'm Nicole Angel. Thank you again. I'm just briefly saying thank you for my EQC position. But getting back to Coleman Avenue, it's been a very, very, very long time coming that we need this. It's imperative. Please vote yes. I'm not going to take forever. I don't know what's coming behind me with other speakers. There may be controversy. It's not a perfect solution. But at a minimum, we need the traffic calming measures. We need the speed bumps. We need the stop sign. I know the parking is going to be tricky. But please proceed with something because we have been waiting forever, and this is essential, and it's a really dangerous situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
I forgot to say I live on Coleman Avenue.
And our next speaker will be Kevin Rennie, followed by Jay Scherls.
Good evening, city council members, staff. I'm Kevin Rennie from the Willows Neighborhood. I have two kids at Laurel School. I'm here in support of the proposed Coleman Avenue project. I really appreciate all the staff and work that's gone into this project. It's been a long time coming. I support the city Menlo Park and its mission to improve transportation alternatives by enhancing safety for people walking, biking, rolling, in reducing the gaps in active transportation or active transportation network. This pilot will advance the transition from high-stress pedestrian and bicycle conditions to low stress and add and to have more accessible mobility. The Coleman Avenue project will create a more welcoming environment, more welcoming and inviting environment for people walking, biking, and rolling. Additionally, this project will will improve regional bike access to several key bikeways, parks, including Flood Park, Peninsula Bikeways, Dumbarton Future, Dumbarton Bridge Trail, the Bay Trail, Edwell Park. As a parent of two children at Laurel School, I'm especially interested how this will impact our youth in our community. These improvements will allow youth to visit their friends, family, head to park, play soccer. Providing a low-stress infrastructure helps parents to feel confident letting their kid outside the house, away from the iPads and all these other things. This project is an essential step towards fostering safe, safer and more sustainable transportation systems across the city and will provide a level of comfort and accessibility for our most vulnerable road users. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Jay Scherls, followed by Kim Novello.
Hi, folks. That's Jay Scherls. I've lived on Coleman Avenue for three years, and like most of us, I agree that students on bikes need a safe place to ride and that cars on our street need to be slowed down. But I don't think the current plan for Coleman will adequately meet these goals while also disproportionately inconveniencing those of us who live there. When I was younger, I rode a bike to school every day down an even busier street. And when they removed parking to put in bike lanes, it actually made me less safe because it resulted in more cars driving down that road at even higher speeds. People naturally drive slower on a road that feels narrower and faster on a road that feels wider. So when you replace parked cars that offer real protection with mere lines of paint, the unintended consequences that the road feels wider and drivers who already barely respect the speed limit will be even more of a threat to your children. As an adult who spent a lot of time on a bike, I can tell you that parked cars are not a threat to anyone obeying traffic laws. But the number one threat to the safety of cyclists and pedestrians is the speed of the cars that are moving. This is already so much of a problem on Coleman that not a week goes by where I don't hear a pedestrian yelling at a car to slow down. If you want your kids to be safer, make the road narrower, make the sidewalk wider, extend the curb out into the street at intersections or add roundabouts or make them bigger so that drivers have to slow down. Alternatively, add bollards to prevent through traffic, make the street go only one way, or best of all, put a raised crossing of Coleman at Willow to keep cars off the road altogether, add a bike lane on the south side where less parking is needed or already disallowed, then route it down Santa Monica or Riordan so that students can cross Ringwood with the benefit of a traffic light and wind up closer to their classroom instead of a field. Anything is preferable to the current plan because Coleman is not just a through fare, it's a high-density housing area whether you like it or not. There are families here with small children where both parents commute and with elders that have lower mobility. Adding speed bumps makes access difficult for ambulances and does more to damage suspensions than it does to slow cars down. Taking away parking in front of our homes just forces us to carry our Costco groceries two blocks in the rain while failing to provide any real safety for cyclists who could just as easily use the sidewalk on the south side of the street. If you need to start somewhere, start on the other side of Berkeley Avenue where there's no sidewalk and in some places, a single curb that's narrower than a foot wide. I can show you a photo if you like. It's the most dangerous part of our street. It forces cyclists and pedestrians into the road, and every student that passes in front of the apartments has to go through there, too. Driving here today, a four-year-old on a scooter veered into the road in front of my car at this exact location while his mom shouted at him to slow down. If you add bike lanes that abruptly end right before this section of the road, you will be encouraging accidents. It just doesn't make sense. I know you can do better. Please put down the paint, pump the brakes, and fix the real problems in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Novello, followed by Christine and Bianca Heelgeist.
Hi, again, thank you. So I, in January, moved with my daughter onto Coleman Avenue. We are literally at the end of Santa Monica Avenue. That's our driveway. So I am 100% for the stop sign there. Every single morning going to school, it is like, I can't see left, who's coming, the cars are coming. The cars across from me are trying to turn left onto Coleman to go towards Laurel and MA. And so I'm 100% in favor of that stop sign. The parking, I do live in the apartment complexes. I don't have a person that needs to come and stay the night. However, given the number of cars that are in front of the parking complex, I am very concerned about having them removed. I appreciate hearing about the 53 permits. I I think if we're going to keep parking, it needs to be kept next to the apartments where the people are living. And I agree with the person before me about the carrying of the groceries. I just think we need to consider that. I'm curious, too, if we can just have the parking park there till like 7:30 or 8:00 in the morning, and then it has to be removed, like just limit when the parking can be so that the real times that we have the bikes coming and going are during, you know, before school and after school. But maybe we can find a compromise so that the people that do need to park there actually can. Let's see. I I noticed in the plan something about seven-foot-wide sidewalks, and I wasn't quite sure if that was necessary. And I know it's, you know, it's hard to accommodate wanting the parking, the bike lane, everything. But I'm curious if there's a way we could help keep some of the parking for the people that live in the apartments. And I did look at some plans. I don't know if they were older, but I am 100% in favor of keeping as many trees as possible. So I don't know if that applies to this current pilot. But I think part of the reason people like to live in Menlo Park is to keep the ambiance and what's nice about it. So thank you for considering my suggestions.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine and Bianca Heelgeist, followed by Gabriel Silverstein and Sarah Kwasnick. Okay, are either of those speakers here? Okay, yeah, Gabriel and Sarah, feel free to come on up.
City Council of Menlo Park. I'm six years old and I bike to Laurel. I mean kindergarten, and I bike to Laurel every day. Please vote to add bike lanes on Coleman so me and my friends that bike on Coleman can be safe. Thank you.
And I'd just like to add on to my son's statement to further emphasize. My husband or I bike our son to Laurel every day. But so many of our son's friends and their parents choose not to bike to school because it simply doesn't feel safe. So many of our friends are stuck driving this flat, mild-climbed route to school and then spending hours of their lives sitting in the car line instead of taking a frankly faster and more convenient morning bike ride with their kid. And of course, this is a prisoner's dilemma situation where the more people drive, the less safe it becomes to do anything but drive. So I implore you, please, vote for the bike lane and stop sign changes to Coleman so we can push the county to move forward with the one-way pilot on their stretch of Coleman and ultimately give everybody better, safer options for how to get to school. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Silvio J. Corin, followed by Catherine Dumont. Silvio, are you still in chambers? Okay, so Catherine Dumont, followed by Francesca Sergey.
Good evening, council. Catherine Dumont, I live in Lynnfield Oaks and ride around the city a lot. I appreciate the work that's been put into the Coleman Avenue Pilot project so far. I've looked at some of the designs and I just appreciate that it's been three years since since this has begun. And I think again, the the timeline is, it'd be great to have something put in and start the pilot so that you can get some data. And so I wanted to voice my support. Thanks.
Thank you, Catherine. So next is Francesca Sergey, followed by Cassandra Lopez.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. My name is Francesca Segre. I serve on the Menlo Park City School District Board, but I am representing just myself tonight and my own opinions here tonight. I am a resident of Menlo Oaks, which is on the county side of Coleman. And I use Coleman daily, walk with my dogs, my kids ride their bikes there daily, and we've been doing it for years. So I am here tonight to urge you to go ahead and do this pilot and remove remove parking as a pilot and put in the stop sign and take some action. I feel excited. I feel like you've set yourself up for success. You passed the resolution. You've done your homework. You've listened to so many comments. And we're just like ready to just take it over the finish line. And if you go ahead and approve this, then I think we can really encourage the county to do their part, which of course will marry this project together and make the dream come true of a place where children can really ride their bikes and walk safely and encourage children to get to school safely with their families, breathing clean air, building their muscles and just relishing this just gorgeous street. I understand there is going to be hardship on the residents of Coleman with the parking and I and it I'm sorry, like there are trade-offs and it's and I feel for them. And I would just say for right now, let's let's pilot it. Let's put the paint on the ground and let's see what happens. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But I was just listening to Ezra Klein in Abundance last night, and he's just slams California. You know, you know, not making progress, always dithering, asking, you know, looking at all these regulations, what you guys do, you know, all the time. And not that you guys are doing it, but the system is sort of creating that. And I just think we have an opportunity here. Pilot something, move forward, you know, show us that we can prefer and put our children over put our children over parking, at least try it for a little while. Go for progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cassandra Lopez, followed by Josh Spira.
Excuse me. Good evening. My name is Cassandra Lopez, and I live on Coleman Avenue. My husband and our three children, ages 17, 14, and 11. I've spoken here before in support of the multi-use pathway because, like many families on Coleman, we believe in safety. And so will it be it's certainly not going to be a hardship for me personally, but will it be frustrating at points? Certainly. But I think to what people have said here tonight, we need to move this forward. But really, what I'm here to ask is very specifically, I'm concerned that there isn't language about approving traffic calming in this. And really, like the biggest concern I have now is that it's undefined. We need speed bumps. We don't need not vague measures. We need not speed tables. Real speed bumps that force drivers to slow down. Even something rubberized for now temporarily would be like really helpful. Coleman is a straight shot to Willow. Drivers regularly speed well over the 25 mile an hour speed limit, which also is supposed to be 15 when children are present. When cars are parked on either side of my driveway, I especially large SUVs with seated windows, work trucks, I'm absolutely blind pulling out. My kids are blind pulling out with on their bikes. My 17-year-old new driver is blind pulling out in the car. And so cars are speeding. They don't slow down for us. And so cars are speeding, they don't sit down for us, or they can't even see me. It's dangerous for my family and everyone biking or walking on the street. Speed tables or other traffic calming measures aren't gonna solve the speed problem. They allow drivers to coast over 35 miles an hour. That's not calming, that's enabling. It doesn't just put residents at risk, it puts the children and adults using the new bike lanes and trails in danger. And if we don't force slower speeds, someone is gonna get hurt. I submitted video to you guys, I don't know if you've, you saw it. Driver speeding, driving erratically, driving on the wrong side of the street to cut through the Korean barbecue parking lot in order to avoid the traffic buildup on Willow. It happens right in front of my house. It's not theoretical, it's happening. I know all these families are here tonight to support the pilot and I'm glad we're working to make things safer, but I ask you to remember that the people who live on Coleman should not be made less safe to make it safe for everyone else. So it's not a fair trade. In addition to speed bumps, love to see six feet of red curb on either side of our driveway to improve visibility. Some more speed limit radar signs. Right now, there's a one speed limit sign going towards Willow at Santa Monica. Painted parking spaces would improve efficiency for people who need the overnight parking. And then real enforcement of overnight parking and the 72-hour parking rules. If you guys walk the street, cars sit for weeks, if not months, at a time. There's rare enforcement unless I call non-emergency or if I email the commander. There's a fix-it click, whatever, click-fix ticket, whatever, of a car that's been there for a month. And a street cleaning plan, please. Coleman should get the same basic services as every other Menlo Park neighborhood and street. So we've supported these changes to make Menlo Park safer. We're asking you to finish the job, protect the families who live here every day. Please add language to your approval tonight to specifically add speed bumps, rubber speed bumps, whatever it be, on Coleman Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Josh Spira, followed by Victoria and Sasha.
My name is Miles Spira and I am six-year-old in kindergarten and, what? At Laurel School and, um... Um, what? Um, wait, and the bike lanes in Coleman are, is just not fair because there is no sidewalks and nothing else that we want to be here. Thank you.
Hi, Council. Thank you very much. First want to say thank you for doing what you do. It's hard work and the community very much appreciates it. My name is Josh Spira. I'm also a trustee of Menlo Park City School District, but I'm here speaking on my personal views, not for the organization. Here to advocate for the pilot program and getting our kids to and from school safely. We have biked to school before. We don't do it often because, quite frankly, it's terrifying to be on that street on a bike with kids and there's no barriers, as has been said. I think more generally speaking, we hear the community clamoring for traffic calming measures. We have a small city that's grown. We love it. We love more housing, we love more people, but we don't love the increase in traffic. And so we need to find ways to calm things down. We need to show people that government works and that it can move forward with projects that the residents have been asking for, in some cases for quite a long time. We also, we live on Willow Road. We've been trying to get a crosswalk on there between Middlefield and Gilbert for 15 years. My neighbors who have been there have said they've been trying to do it for 25 years. The other kid who is speaking up here lives on the other side of Willow Road from us. For us to even get to our friend's house, it's, it's terrifying. So traveling around Menlo Park, if you're not in a car, is, is really hard. And we want our city to be more livable and we want to make our city work for all of our residents. And I also do understand what the residents of Coleman were saying about how this inconveniences them. So I hope we can move forward with the pilot and find a good permanent solution that works for everybody, but first and foremost for our children because we, we owe it to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Victoria and Sasha, followed by Athena Ikermos.
My name is Victoria Wu. I'm here with my daughter Sasha. She actually is fighting her jet lag after just a long trip. And, but she is here to support the pilot program because it's extremely important for her and me. And we often bike to Stanford like a 10K run trip and over the two hours and with no problem and she enjoys that. But it's impossible for us to just bike to lower campus. And we really want to support this pilot program. It's also for the, for over the last six years, also because I have an older daughter who is a fifth grader and then since she was in kindergarten, we tried it twice, once with her daddy and once with her, with me. And biking to lower campus is impossible. It's the most terrifying thing and it's traumatic. It's like, it gives the parents like nightmare or the high blood pressure just biking over there. And then when, she is a really good biker, so we started trying when she was in kindergarten, once in the morning, once in the afternoon after the traffic slows down. But it's just impossible. And we really love living in Menlo Park and this is a long due project. I know the solution is not perfect. I really heard all the residents. I feel for them too. That's why I think it's great. It's a pilot program and then we can really address if there's any like ways we can improve it after we piloted for a while, then we get real data. And I really appreciate you guys approved other bike lane projects before and being very active in improving the residents' life here. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Athena Ikermos, followed by Meredith Bergen Bailey.
Hello, my name is Athena Ikermos. I'm a member of the Complete Streets Commission, but I'm also speaking here today as a resident of an apartment complex on Coleman Avenue. I actually am a two-car household, but we live in an apartment complex, which gives us one spot and I do sometimes use the street parking as well. That all being said, I also am a bike commuter most of the time. I ride my bike to work and I leave the house around 8:30 in the morning and I see all of these kids who are trying to get to school and also all of their parents who are driving them sometimes. And people just generally commuting and the traffic will get really bad and I see all of these kids and they'll be in bunches, biking with their friends, with or without their parents sometimes. And even if I am next to them, I'm scared for them, even though they are not my children because it is, it is very intimidating as like an adult to be biking on that road. And I can only imagine if you're, you know, seven or eight years old and you're biking with your friends, you don't want to be paying attention to what's going on around you. You want to be, feel secure and if you're the parent of a child like that, you want to feel secure for your child. So I just want to emphasize some of the, some of the things that came up in the Complete Streets Commission meeting that I resonated really strongly with. So specifically, the stop sign on Santa Monica and Coleman Avenue, I think that that's critical. There's a school bus stop there. There's lots of little kids that are running around at around 8:30 in the morning waiting for their school bus. So having a stop sign there would be really helpful. But also, even though I do find the parking on Coleman Avenue very useful for me, I also feel like it obstructs the driveways. The view from the driveways is basically completely blocked off and you have to pull pretty far into the street in order to be able to make, to see, to pull out of your driveway safely. So I just want to emphasize that the parking itself is a, you know, impedes the safety of the street. And one more point, sorry, is that the, we shouldn't, not really ignore the possibility that after this pilot is implemented, that people will be parking in the bike lane. And yeah, just considering different ways to prevent that, maybe with temporary boundaries between the street or the car lane and the bike lane that would really emphasize the safety of the people in the bike lane for, during the transition period.
Thank you, Athena. Our next speaker is Meredith Bergen Bailey, followed by Ross Silverstein.
Good evening, Council. I'm delighted that this is being discussed tonight and equally delighted that you are keeping Safe Routes as a citywide priority this year. I'm a Safe Routes to School parent volunteer at Laurel Elementary School. My Safe Routes to School co-chair and I receive emails from deeply concerned parents who experience and witness scary situations during their school commute on Coleman Avenue. One of our Laurel squirrels was hit two years ago on Coleman near Willow. Luckily, he walked away. I also saw in the written public comment for tonight that the rider had witnessed a hit-and-run accident involving an MA student on a bike on Coleman, near Coleman Place. That is just two known accidents involving a juvenile cyclist being struck by a car on Coleman Avenue. I'm under a very strong impression that these are not the only unreported cases of vehicular strikes. Another responsibility I have is as a Complete Streets Commissioner. After a robust meeting discussing Coleman in March, the commissioners were in favor of the proposed pilot. We advised in addition to the proposal the following. Expediting the stop sign placement and traffic calming, as well as a temporary physical barrier to both protect users and discourage parking. Adding some paint, a yellow center line, marked parking spots, and painting the bike lane green would all support this transition. I also wanted to take a couple of seconds to just compliment city staff on their efforts to be sure that the entire public was well-educated about this effort from the citywide emails, including council members, in their newsletters. I've heard from friends who live on Coleman that they've received mailers from the city, the A-frames with the QR codes. I've never seen that before. I thought it was very ingenious. So just a compliment to city staff on the time and effort they've put into this. This has been a long-term issue and the proposed changes will increase safety for all users, pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. I really look forward in the fall to be leading a Laurel bike bus to our upper campus with this additional safety infrastructure in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ross Silverstein, followed by Jenny M.
Hi, City Council. Thank you for your time. I was able to express my support for this project via email, but I just wanted to comment on some of the more technical aspects of the pilot proposal to make sure that you guys are thinking about some additional things. I entirely agree with the previous comment that said that road width has significant impact on vehicle speeds. So to whatever extent possible, can we please, like the renderings, but unlike today, paint formal lane lines on Coleman and make them narrow so that the road visually appears less wide? And then importantly, can we please be very clear what is going to happen when the bike lane ends right at the city line? Is it going to be another ambiguous conflict point between cyclists and drivers? Or is there a plan to put in possibly a yield sign for cars to yield to cyclists who would then be merging into the lane for the county portion when there would be a shared space between the two? I don't think that there's been anything resolved on that. And then lastly, I'm, I'm in major support of other complete street and traffic calming measures such as bulb-outs or protected bollards or an even full raised intersection at Santa Monica, but it's my understanding that some of those would likely not be able to be implemented until this pilot was deemed to be permanent and, and they would be implemented permanently, but please keep those in mind as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ross. Our next speaker is Jenny M., followed by a caller coming in from 4977.
Good evening, Council members. Thank you so much for your hard work. My name is Jenny Madrid. I have been a Coleman resident for 13 years. My children went to Laurel, they now go to Hillview and MA, so very familiar with Coleman and the speed at which people drive down the street. I am also a part of the apartment community. And in, in short, please do not remove the parking for Coleman residents. They are hardworking people who would like to, just as many residents here in Menlo Park park close to their homes, bring their groceries in like somebody else had said previous. Removing the parking would be a permanent solution for a temporary problem. There is little bike traffic over the weekends and over the summer. Although I don't agree with the parking being removed, I do agree with speed bumps or speed calming options to be implemented, the stop sign at Santa Monica, because those are incredibly important for our kids to be able to cross safely, including my kid who walks across the street to catch the Samtrans bus to Hillview. And we, because, going back to the parking comment, our neighbors, one in particular on Santa Monica online had shared that they don't want people parking on their street, which I understand. I get that it will create a lot more, you know, traffic and congestion. So we could keep the parking on Coleman. I know that I would appreciate it as well as many other families who live here in the apartment community. And it's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is calling in from a number ending in 4977, followed by Dziaz Smolek. And for our caller, you should be able to press star nine on your device.
Yes, hello. My name is Don Tackus. I live on, on Santa Monica Avenue. I'm all for the, you know, three-way stop sign at Santa Monica and Coleman. I'm also all for bicycle safety, but I've lived here for 25 years. I'm seeing an influx of more and more cars parking on Santa Monica from the apartments and it's creating kind of an unsafe environment on Santa Monica Avenue. Now, a lot of people speaking in favor of this bike lane, and like I say, I'm all for bicycle safety, don't live in this area and don't see the parking problem that we have here. I think there's a discrepancy in the number of permits. I heard the number 59. Well, I've done some walking around in the evening and seen the parking on Coleman Avenue and Santa Monica. There's up to 90 cars parked between Coleman, Santa Monica, and Coleman Place. So, you know, generally there's 50 or so cars parked on the north side of Coleman and very little parking spaces on Coleman Place and the south side of Coleman. So the other problem is parking enforcement. I found out that there is one parking enforcement officer for all of Menlo Park that works four days a week. So parking enforcement is really not being done as effectively as it should be. So my question, or my question here is, if you remove 50-some-odd spaces from the north side of Coleman, where are these cars gonna park? And they're really, their only alternative is Santa Monica Avenue and it's gonna become a nightmare on Santa Monica Avenue as well as Coleman. So I would look for other alternatives to making the streets safer, to slow down traffic, but eliminating 50-some-odd parking spaces is really a bad idea. So I would like the Council to consider that. So thank you.
Thank you, Don. Our next speaker is Dziaz Smolek, followed by Meredith Pressfield.
My name is Tony Smolek. Don kind of stole by thunder here, but my wife and I are seniors in our late 70s and we live on Santa Monica Avenue too, between Gilbert and Coleman. Totally support what you're trying to do to make it safer in Coleman. However, as Don said, the problem's gonna be for Santa Monica Avenue. Right now, every day, every night, the west side of the street where there's a walkway, nobody can use it because the people living in the apartments have to park all the way down between Coleman and Gilbert on Santa Monica. all the way down between Coleman and Gilbert on Santa Monica. And my fear is, there's no lights on our, no streetlights on our street. And quite frankly, in the evening, if they start parking on our side of the street, where the six houses are, there's barely going to be room for cars to go east and west down the street. And people from the apartments leave all the time and walk by our house to go down to Seminary Park with their kids and their strollers and their dogs during the daytime. So I don't have an answer. I don't have a solution. I just, as Don said and others have said, though, they got to do something about parking enforcement, possibly telling cars they can't park on the east side in front of the six homes. I don't know if that's the answer, but if you do allow them to park there, I understand that, but I think it's going to be a safety hazard, because literally, there'll be like about three feet clearance between cars coming both ways down Santa Monica Avenue. Thank you for your time, and thank you, City Council. I served myself some many years ago before retired, and my community, and we've got a tough job, and it's been a long night, and I wish you a good evening. Good night.
Thank you, Tony. Our next speaker is Meredith Pressfield, followed by Adina Levin.
Hi. Thank you, City Council, and everyone who's participated in this. I'm a lifelong Willow's resident, and I have a student who goes to Laurel, and she begs me every single morning to ride her bike to school. We used to ride to school last year when she was in TK, when she was four and five with her two-year-old brother, and unfortunately, one morning, we were behind MA students riding, and one of them was not wearing a helmet, and one of the parked cars opened its door. The MA student flew over the parked car's door, and we had to call 911, and they sent an ambulance and a firetruck. And you can imagine what that was like for the student, as well as everybody else who was there, as well as young children who are then scared to bike to school. So I think, including the bike lane and all of the measures in the pilot, is going to make it safer for students to get to school and less stressful for their parents, who will be biking with them as well. So I just want to say thank you for considering this, and I hope the Commission votes in favor of the pilot.
Thank you for your comment. And our final speaker is going to be, oh, Adina? Looks like you lowered your hand. There we go. Perfect. Our final speaker is Adina Levin.
Hello. Good evening, Council members. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident, and I'm a former Complete Streets Commissioner, and this is a topic that has been in the works for many years. I'm glad to see that there is a pilot being proposed, and encourage the City Council to approve the pilot, and to consider the Complete Streets recommendations as well. You know, one thing I wanted to speak up about is something that was suggested as a, that may seem like a compromise, but I, you know, strongly think is not a good idea, and that is the concept of having temporary bike lanes that are only during specific, you know, school bell time commute hours. That does not take into account the fact that children have after-school programs, the fact that children, you know, go and visit friends at times that are not during school, the fact that, like, children will go and ride a bicycle to the park to play, and the fact that adults, you know, use bicycles for commuting and to go to the store and for other purposes. Having part-time bike lanes is, you know, less safe, because people will go out and try to bike and not have the infrastructure that they would otherwise depend on. So please do approve the pilot, and we can learn from the pilot and make improvements and course corrections from there. And also, please do work with the county to encourage them to work on the other section of the street for a continuous, safe experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina. All right. Seeing no further hands or cards. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you, and thank you to all the public who commented on this. It's a very important issue. I would now like to open for City Council questions and discussion. Councilmember Wise.
Hi. Thank you so much for being here, and to all the public commenters, and thank you to staff for all your hard work. A very quick question. So I just wanted to clarify, in the report, it looks like there is a temporary speed reduction measure, so a rubberized speed hump. I just want to clarify that that is a speed bump. It's just a temporary one because this is a pilot. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you for the question. So since the, at the October 22 City Council meeting, staff has confirmed implementing rubberized speed cushions similar to the town of Atherton, so those will be implemented at the same time as the pilot.
Okay, wonderful. And then, is it just the one, and where on the street would it be located?
There's three different locations where the rubberized speed cushions would be implemented. Judy, could you pull up the extra slide? Thank you. So there's three different locations where this is marked as a temporary speed reduction measures, but they will be rubberized speed cushions, and there's three different locations along the corridor that will be used. And one of them is before Coleman Place, one of them is between Coleman Place and Santa Monica Avenue, and then one of them is after Santa Monica Avenue towards the county side.
Okay, fantastic. And thank you for this visual.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Thank you to city staff and to everyone that has come out and made comments. I think I'm going to maybe take a different tack on this and not really debate the merits. I have a visual aid that I didn't even realize, but I'm biking home tonight, and we live on Coleman. I have a family of five that's lived there for five years. We have teenage boys who are driving, one who walks to MA. And so I guess what I want to say, just as a small kind of aside, is what you're hearing about safety isn't exaggerated. Firsthand experience. It's not hyperbole to stir up your emotions. It's real. And there's a few key points that I want to just kind of reemphasize what you've heard through this process. Many of these drivers are teenagers that go to MA, and so they speed, they're distracted. I've got a couple that I'm worried about when they're behind the wheel, and it's not an exaggeration to say this is unsafe because of the drivers, but also the students. And I'm looking over at the Vice Mayor, and it's very similar in some ways to the Hillview route that you see every day, and they travel in packs. And so there's multiple hazards from the type of drivers that are on the road, many hours more than just school hours, but the way that the kids also travel. The other things that I just, I understand the parking. We, you know, respect that being residents there in those apartments. We also live in the apartments there. But the views from the driveways are incredibly impaired, and parking on the street is impeding the ability to pull out. Cassandra and others mentioned that. I'm a 40-year driver, and I still feel incredibly unsafe every time I try to turn left to get to work, because if the sun is at the right angle and there's a truck parked in that spot, I don't know if I'm going to get hit either way on Coleman. And, you know, that's me saying that. I've got three teenage boys that are learning to drive. I worry about them every day, and I worry about it when I bike on Coleman. So, you know, people saying it's unsafe to get a certain decision from us, I just want to say, as someone who's sitting up here and having to make that decision, I'm experiencing that every day. I'm going to experience that tonight in a smaller form. So I think that's really important to kind of remember is that, you know, the lived experience for a lot of this stuff sometimes can be exaggerated, but sometimes it's not. And just as a small aside, talking about the county side, some of the folks who were in the room and advocating for this, we were out talking to a member of the Board of Supervisors a few weeks ago to talk about the county side. And ironically, you know, there was a student bike rider who was struck right, almost right in front of us. Close call. Literally, as we were making the point about how unsafe it is on Coleman and Ringwood and the whole area, there was almost an accident. So I know that's not debating the technical aspects and talking about the proposal in front of us, but, you know, this is one area where it's lived experience for me, and every day I can testify to what people in the room are saying. So I'd say, please consider that as we're making this decision, because it's a very real situation. So thanks for that.
So I have a couple of questions, and that's, in the resolution, we are only talking about, we're voting on the stop sign and the parking removal. There's also, there's, okay, please.
Sorry. Yes, that is correct.
And in the report, there's all sorts of measures that are part of the pilot. Are you here tonight? The pilot will include all those measures, which include the speed bumps and all, and what, but what you're here tonight to do is to get this specific parking removal and stop sign approval, but that doesn't, it's a whole package, I guess, is what I'm saying? Or is there some, how will this be implemented?
Yes, the action tonight is specific to the stop sign and the parking removal. That's part of the Council's role. It's part of the municipal code, so we need that formal action. The rest was provided as informational basis. We did present to the Complete Streets Commission, and we're anxious, given the timing of the, basically implementing, so that we're ready for the next school year. So we'll be using the summer to install the pilot and then get ready to then track the effectiveness throughout the year.
And so the pilot will be installed, as has been described?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, and also the shared experiences from Council and also from the public. Just have a few questions, because I do experience regularly the impacts of apartment buildings not having enough parking, and who that actually affects. And so, is there any ideas from staff as far as how to deal with the residual effect of eliminating parking? Because usually, when we eliminate it, we don't bring it back.
So for the resolution tonight, it'll be for authorizing the parking removal from the north side of Coleman. The parking will remain on the south side of Coleman, as well as Coleman Place and Santa Monica Avenue, and the neighboring streets such as Gilbert Avenue. So alternatively, those displaced cars that would have been parked on the north part of Coleman Avenue will have other options between Santa Monica Avenue and the various neighborhood streets. Yeah.
So do, and it's probably in the staff report, the number of cars potentially parking on streets that they don't live on. So then, that impact would mean that the folks who do live on that street may not be able to park in front of their own house. That's what I'm experiencing. And so I'm just asking if there's any thoughts to what will, what will you do? Because eventually, complaints will come, if not to city staff, but to the City Council.
So we made the count that 40 spots will be removed. There is the parking permit process, so anyone who needs to park overnight in the neighborhood can obtain that permit. You're absolutely right. We don't have the ability to note who's parking where. So when we did our counts, and we actually took readings at night on the side streets, we don't know if those vehicles parked on Santa Monica are from the apartment dwellers or from folks who, you know, whose homes those vehicles were parked in front of. So we don't have that information. What we can say is that there is a parking permit process in place for folks to use other streets that, you know, whose parking will be offset by those 40 spaces.
And this was already brought up, and I believe it's been discussed already by Council members and definitely shared with the police chief, and that's just the overnight parking enforcement, that we, and even the 72-hour enforcement.
Yes. Unfortunately, the chief is on a plane, so he could not be here. But we did communicate on this, and indeed, we do have staffing challenges with one part-time parking, overnight parking enforcer. He suggested that in terms of the success of this pilot, having residents call so that those parking violations can be addressed is the best measure. But we will also, part of the metrics of this pilot is for us to really monitor and assess the needs as we implement.
Thank you. And I am supportive of the pilot. Just want to make sure that we're making the best decisions to improve safety for pedestrians and cyclists. Not sure if signage could be added someplace. I know that's an issue everywhere. In fact, I believe a resident brought up that there's no street sweeping happening, and it's probably because of the cars. So there's a lot of other components, I think, that need to be discussed, but a lot of this I see is about behavior changes, and sometimes having some engineering changes helps with the behavior changes. So I will not stand in the way of this. Looking forward to when the pilot comes back to us with some feedback about how effective it is. And also, my hope is that it does improve safety for the, for anyone that's walking or biking in the area.
Can you review what the timeline is for the stop sign and the parking removal? And we've heard from the Complete Streets Commission that, and from residents, is there any way to expedite the stop sign?
So for the pilot installation, we will be using our on-call contractor to help with the signage and striping. And what likely our contractor will mobilize once. Staff can try to work with our on-call contractor to try to expedite that timeline as much as possible, but likely, given the demand for our on-call contractor, it'll likely be at once.
I'm sorry, it'll likely be?
All at once, at the pilot installation with the stop sign and the rubberized speed cushions.
Thank you. And when do you expect that to happen?
Right now, staff is aiming for about mid to late June, when school is out of session.
Thank you. If there are no more comments, I would, is there a motion and a second? I'm happy to make a motion.
I'm happy to second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Wise, and a second by City Councilmember Schmidt, to adopt a resolution to authorize the removal of parking from the north side of Coleman Avenue and authorize the installation of a stop sign at Coleman Avenue and Santa Monica Avenue to allow for the implementation of the Coleman Avenue Pilot Project in summer of 2025. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. The next regular business item is L2, Consider and Adopt Resolution to Repeal the Short-Term Closure of a Portion of Ryan's Lane Between Crane Street and Escondido Lane to Vehicles. Here to introduce the item is Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will first start with a recent timeline of the short-term closure on Ryan's Lane. In October 2023, the Council enacted this closure to allow temporary outdoor dining by Carpaccio during the construction of Clark's Oyster Bar. In March of this year, at the City Council workshop, the City Council discussed downtown street closures, and the city manager has also extended the closure on Ryan's Lane to accommodate ongoing construction at Clark's through the end of this month in April. I also want to note that on April 14th and 21st, we did receive correspondence from the owners of Carpaccio, including a letter from them and a forwarded letter from Clark's Oyster Bar. Oyster Bar. Okay, next, we will take a look at this map. This depicts businesses that have access to both Ryan's Lane and Escondido Lane, and these businesses have addresses on Chestnut, Santa Cruz, or Crane Street. They have backdoors on Ryan's Lane or Escondido. This is the same map that was actually presented to the City Council in October 2023 as an exhibit to the resolution to close the street on a short-term basis, but we've added additional business names in blue, in blue text, and also noted that Ruby Living Design is closed and Clark's is now open to the public. As we noted during the City Council Workshop, our interim Economic Development Manager conducted an informal survey about preferences for Ryan's Lane for businesses in the area. Five businesses indicated a preference to reopen at that time. We know currently that Clark's and Carpaccio would like it to remain closed. We also have an idea that the Discovery Store feels the closure prevents illegal dumping at their backdoor where they take deliveries. Okay, these are some very recent pictures of the closure area in current day. The picture on the left was taken Thursday, and you can see that this is looking down towards Crane Street. You'll notice in, in all of these photos that there are some items that are now being stored in Ryan's Lane, including a cooking oil receptacle, linens and uniforms, there's stacked firewood now, there's garbage cans, other larger metal bins, and old chairs, gas heaters, things like that. The image in the middle and then on the right was taken just yesterday. It does show a vehicle that's parked that was dropping up donation items at the Discovery Store. These vehicles actually pull up, they drop off their items, and then they start reversing back out, and they do have to kind of navigate some of the items that are being stored in the lane right now. Okay, this slide shows the outdoor dining setup at Carpaccio from the perspective of Crane Street, and it also shows a glimpse into the seating area. You'll see that there's been some shade structures installed, lighting, et cetera. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see that pedestrian pathway. If a long-term closure were enacted by the City Council on Ryan's Lane, there would be improvements required of this outdoor dining setup. For example, there is a drainage divot that runs down the middle of Ryan's Lane. It creates an uneven surface in the outdoor dining area that would need to be addressed, among other issues relating to electrical storage or propane tanks and things like So there are a couple of options for next steps. One is for the City Council to adopt the resolution to repeal the short-term closure tonight. In that case, staff would coordinate with businesses to remove items from the lane. We would also, city staff would coordinate the removal of barriers. And then we would also monitor safety conditions on Ryan's Lane if it was open to vehicle traffic, and depending on what is observed, could implement a variety of safety improvements, too. The other option is the City Council could consider a longer-term closure that will be brought back as a future agenda item. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So for any member of the public who wishes to provide comment on regular business item L2, Consider and Adopt a Resolution to Repeal the Short-Term Closure of a Portion of Ryan's Lane Between Crane Street and Escondido Lane to Vehicles. If you are in person, please complete a speaker card or turn that to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, engaging that hand feature, or calling in, please press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on item L2. Okay, seeing the one card. Pete, go right ahead.
Referring to the closure of that lane, I've worked for 15 years in retail in downtown Menlo Park, and I think once Clark's is opened, that there'll be a competition with Carpaccios to get their deliveries. The, the service trucks are going to have to get out of the way for regular traffic. We have a problem in this city with regular traffic now, and it causes a lot of tempers on Menlo Avenue now because of the closure on Santa Cruz with the restaurants. It's backed up where there's not enough of a green light. There'll be people all the way back to university, almost, at least I came here on my bike tonight. And when it turned green on El Camino, only about seven or eight cars got through, and the line just kept moving past Trader Joe's. We have a lot of business coming to Trader Joe's. People probably want to get food, but they could probably eat out in Menlo Park if there's better conveniences. So I might be taking too much time, but I think you should open that street. Even though Carpaccios thinks they need the extra seating, just like the one on Santa Cruz, they think they're going to make a lot of people happy in the restaurants, but I just don't think it's fair to have a formerly planned traffic flow disrupted like it's being done today. And I think we have to think of the fathers that went before us, you know, our Heavenly Father up there left things for us to, to respect. And just closing all streets is not very respectful unless you like to ride a bike. Get more people riding.
Thank you for your comment. And I am seeing no further hands or cards. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. I would now like to open for city council questions and discussion.
Thank you. So what, given that summer is coming up, have they, I just imagine that they are hoping to continue to have this outdoor space for the summertime, when I assume more people want to eat outdoors. Is there an opportunity to keep it open for the summertime and then revisit this in the fall? Or I guess what's the status there?
If that was the desire of the council, then staff would bring this back as a future agenda item. And if you wanted to consider a specific time period for a longer-term, short, short-term closure, we, we could specify at that time as well.
Maybe building on what Councilmember Wise was saying is, not a big fan of having to revisit things 50 different times, but if there, if there was an opportunity to say this stayed open through the summer or just to benefit them, but then the closure date is, you know, X, September or whatever makes sense, is that an option? Is what, did I hear that right? That it would be an option where we wouldn't have to revisit it, but we could set a post-summer closure date, and then that's the decision? Would that, would that work?
So, well, currently, with our current short-term closure, the reso, the resolution that the City Council adopted allowed the council to return to this closure to determine whether they would like to make it long-term. Based on what we heard from the City Council Workshop, we bought, brought back a resolution tonight to actually repeal that former resolution for the short-term, short-term closure, and that's the cleanest way to kind of have that endpoint to the, to the closure. So there likely, in this case, what you're asking, there likely would be two agenda items. One, to, you know, extend the closure, and then another maybe to really wrap it up at the end and repeal that resolution. At least that's the, the path we've taken with this one.
Okay, thanks.
So I have a few questions about the closure, and that's how will Clark's get deliveries with and without the lane closure?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time?
Certainly. How will Clark's get deliveries? And I suppose Carpaccios, although I assume they use, well, how will Clark's and Carpaccios get deliveries with and without the lane closure?
So currently, the plans for Clark's do not specify where deliveries take place, and there's not a condition that restricts where deliveries could occur, but we do know that Clark's has indicated to staff that they will take deliveries on Ryan's Lane. And it, it makes sense because their backdoor opens to a work area within the restaurant, whereas other entry points are through, you know, seating areas in the restaurant. So that, that is their preference to use Ryan's Lane. In terms of Carpaccio, I'm, I'm actually not totally sure where, where the deliveries would take place.
Thank you. Actually, that makes me question, so they could actually park on Crane? I, I am concerned about that because that's...
I, I don't know what the, the rules are for Carpaccio's deliveries. I think it's happened...
Oh, I'm actually thinking of Clark's.
Yeah, well, they...
Or anyone, I guess.
Yeah, they, I, for all intents and purposes, they're using Ryan's Lane for deliveries.
Okay, thank you. And then is it possible that there could be a, that if we were to reopen Ryan's Lane, that Carpaccio or presumably Clark's, but I'm thinking Carpaccio, could get a temporary closure, a special events permit if they had some sort of large event that they really, you know, someone who wanted to book the outdoor space?
Yes, a special events permit is definitely an option. It would be needed to close the lane for the event. It could be used for things like a larger holiday party or rental or, you know, whatever, whatever they needed to kind of set up an event there. The note is that an individual special events permit would be needed for each time they would like to close the lane.
But a special events permit does work, in fact, for a restaurant in that situation?
Yes, we believe so.
Thank you. I will say, I regularly travel around and try to make it a point of looking at how well it's, Carpaccios is using that space, and it is incredibly infrequent. I regularly see bikes stored there, like a bike will be stored there or something, but it's very, very, I, I think I've seen someone there once, and I'm sure there's more use than that, but it is something that I, I, I do not see the area used much at all, and it's times when other outdoor seating will be used, and they just have not utilized the area.
Could Carpaccio apply to have an outdoor dining area, like on Crane Street, like similar to how businesses on Santa Cruz have outdoor dining areas on Santa Cruz?
I, I think there's some space constraints with approving that, unfortunately.
How about on the sidewalk?
That, that's actually what I was thinking, on, on the sidewalk. But if, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wise, if you were actually thinking in parking spaces on...
Oh, no, I was thinking of parking spaces, but I'm not opposed to sidewalk, if that's an option.
Okay, on that side of the street, there, there's no parking spaces in front of Carpaccio to kind of take up for an outdoor dining setup or a streetery, so it would, their option is really sidewalk, but there's not enough room to preserve for pedestrian access.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to say, I appreciate the Vice Mayor's comment about utilization because that, you know, this has been closed for a while, right? And although I was thinking it'd be nice to give him a little more time during the summer, this feels very different than the French Quarter part of, you know, Santa Cruz, which is always busy at various times, even the, the full stretch. So to me, utilization is kind of the key decision factor as I'm thinking about this. So thanks for that.
Thank you. I will also state, one of the businesses that I speak to fairly regularly has been upset that the lane has been closed and has just, the entire time has been dealing with it, but sees that it's a real traffic hazard in their opinion, and is very interested in So if there's no more comments, is, would anyone like to make a motion? And a second.
Okay, so it looks like I do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Wise and a second by Vice Mayor Nash to adopt a resolution to repeal Resolution Number 6866 that created a short-term street closure of Ryan's Lane for an approximately 40-foot-long portion between Crane Street and Escondido Lane to traffic, to vehicle traffic based on the completion of construction for Clark's Oyster Bar. Is there any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
And the final regular business item tonight is Consider and Adopt a Resolution to Reduce the Utility Users Tax. Here to introduce the item is, again, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So the utility users tax was originally adopted by a majority of voters in November 2006. The City Council reduced the tax to 0% in May 2023, and then continued the reduction to 0% in May 2024. In 2023, the city did provide notice to all utility providers, and all utility providers have since ceased collecting the tax. So tonight, staff recommends that the city, recommends that the City Council once again adopts a resolution extending the UUT to 0%.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So for any member of the public wishing to speak on regular business item L3, Consider and Adopt a Resolution to Reduce the User Utility, or the Utility User Tax. If you are in person, please complete a speaker card, return that to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, engaging that hand feature, calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. Final call for public comment on regular business item L3. Seeing no hands or cards. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. I would like to open now for city council questions and discussion. Is there a motion? And a second.
I do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Taylor and a second by City Councilmember Wise to adopt a resolution extending the reduction of the utility user tax to 0%, pursuant to Section 3.14.130 of the Menlo Park Municipal Code. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the City Council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the City Council. Informational items are not action items, however, a City Council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, any member of the public wishing to speak on informational items M1, City Council Agenda Topics, or M2, the Community-Wide Electrification Program Home Upgrade Service Progress Report. If you are in person, please bring me a speaker card. If you are virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our informational items M1 and M2. Seeing no hands or cards. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, and just wanted to thank the staff, not just for the staff report, but also all of the efforts that the team has put towards getting the community electrified through the program. Also, just wanted to ask if there's... Also, just wanted to ask if there's any possibility to reconsider applicants that were denied? Or even looking at why they were denied and maybe look, and maybe making some edits to our requirements? Just a thought. Thank you.
I'm happy to respond to that. Actually, we do have our Sustainability Manager, Rachel Laundre, online. She might want to take the first stab at that question.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go right ahead.
Sure. So we have been going back through our application list to review under the new eligibility requirements defined during the March 25th City Council meeting. So we're making contact with folks who are now income-eligible or who are income-eligible landlords. And so we have made successful contact with four past applicants who weren't eligible under kind of the initial program guidelines. Was there a specific eligibility requirement beyond those that you were looking to have applicants reviewed under?
Yes, and there is an email that I received that I need to reread, and I actually can forward it to you in the City Manager's office. Because there's some information I think that can be helpful.
Okay. Great. We definitely do have a great relationship with Peninsula Clean Energy, and we're constantly coordinating on specific addresses. So there's certainly homes that we can revisit and see if it would be appropriate to serve them under our updated program.
Thank you. Thank you. So now we will move on to the City Manager report, and we have City Manager Justin Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. So in honor of upcoming Bicycle Safety Month, I'd like to encourage people to attend the Bike Rodeo being held this Sunday at Flood Park, the partnership between our Menlo Park Police Department and the California Highway Patrol. So it's this Sunday, May 4th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Flood Park. It's a great opportunity to practice safety, sharing the road while riding your bicycle. There'll also be helmet fittings and a bike repair booth at the event. So that's this Sunday, May 4th at Flood Park. Yes, it's through the Vice Mayor.
Yes, please, would you repeat the times? Thank you.
Yeah, the times this Sunday are from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Sunday, May 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any reports from City Council members since the April 15th City Council meeting? Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. I want to share that as of, I believe it was April 16th, I've been appointed to the San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development Commission, which protects and enhances the San Francisco Bay and advances the Bay's responsibility for production and equitable use for today and for generations to come as we face challenges with climate and sea level rise.
Thank you. That's exciting. So I have, actually, I was going to say, why don't you go ahead with. All right, so I will go ahead. On Councilmember Schmidt and I both participated on, in an Ensnell bike ride, the Safe Routes to School Bike Bus for Earth Day. And I think it was a really exciting time to see all these little kids biking very proficiently, for the most part. From, Councilmember Schmidt started in the Willows, I started downtown, and we met at City Hall, and then we took a route to Ensnell. And it was really a great time. And the Safe Routes to School group at Ensnell is working to have more bike busts more often. And it's great, and it's also really makes the safe routes that we are, such as Coleman, such as Middle, even more meaningful. So I also wanted to report out that from Peninsula Clean Energy, and we approved some local government building electrification program. And five project applications were selected for funding for the current year, totaling $1 million in incentives and $1.6 million in loan. And the projects include Project Electrifying, our HVAC at the Child Development Center for Menlo Park. We also have a public EV fleet program. There's 11 cities have enrolled, including Menlo Park. And Menlo Park plans to install more than 30 charging stations for fleet vehicles at the City Hall, Police Department, and Corp Yard, being funded by Peninsula Clean Energy. And there's also, as we just discussed, the electrification efforts in program marketing. There is marketing efforts to focus on promoting electrification and EV adoption. And it includes our very own Menlo Park electrification, which is really exciting. And then finally, I was part of a citywide cleanup effort on Sunday. And I spent two hours cleaning up downtown and was just amazed at how much. On one hand, it was cleaner than I expected just visually. But when you started looking in the planters and all around, I know, in two hours, I collected mostly small items, 10 pounds worth of items. It was really amazing. And something that'll be interesting to see whether we can get the city doing at some point, because it was a really good sort of team-building effort and really, I saw a lot of residents there. It was interesting talking to them. And also, just very, very good to clean up downtown and felt good. Thanks. Councilmember Schmidt.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash, and I'll definitely second the bike route experience. It was, I think we started out with three of us, and it grew to, you know, probably 50. So it was fantastic. And we ended up at Ensnell, which was great to kind of catch up with folks. And we had a really, it was a great time and educational about how that kind of stuff works. The two that I wanted to call out, one was the, I attached a presentation that I'd encourage everybody to look at in the public and obviously my fellow council members, that was shared during a Commute.org board meeting from SPUR around the current state of public transportation. And I felt like that was, it was more informational to just get that on people's radar. I found it incredibly informative about where we are at this moment in the life cycle of our public transportation network. So would encourage folks to take a look. And then the second one is, I just, a huge shout out for the Earth Day Festival. And, you know, Mayor Combs got to do a tree planting at the Bellhaven Community Center. I'm really glad we hosted there. I was a little worried. I've been involved for a few years now in that planning, and we've had big spaces at AMA. So I wasn't quite sure if it would all kind of fit, but it was a, it was a great fit. There were tons of folks there, lots of great food. A big shout out to, the EQC team was there, Ms. Laundre and her team were there, but there were so many city departments also. And it just, it was a great space. It was a great few hours of celebrating Earth Day. So just wanted to express some appreciation to those teams as well. Thanks.
It was electrifying. With that, I will adjourn. Thank you.